2020 Town of Mansfield Select Board Meeting is called to order. Will Town Manager Kevin Dumas please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
United States. Republic.
And one nation.
Okay. Whereas both the Federal Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health have advised residents to take extra measures to put distance between themselves and other people to further reduce the risk of being exposed to COVID-19. Governor Baker has issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20. In order to satisfy the open meeting law requirements, today's Town of Mansfield Select Board Meeting will be available to the public via GoToWebinar and Mansfield Cable. The instructions for joining via GoToWebinar are in the meeting notice on the town's website at www.mansfieldmass.com and then clicking on today's date on the calendar. For those of you at home or watching or wondering who these bright eager faces are, I'd like to welcome our colleagues from the School Committee, the Finance Committee, and the Capital Improvement Planning Committee and thank them all for the time and effort you all spend on behalf of the town. The initial, the initial part of this meeting will consist of concurrent meetings of these boards where we'll all have the opportunity to learn more and ask questions about capital improvement needs, specifically well improvements largely driven by new state regulations as well as vehicle requests. The Select Board, School Committee, and Finance Committee will then turn to potential budget adjustments based largely upon receipt of additional state aid more than was anticipated at the annual town meeting, as well as the recent certification of the town street cash. In reaching a budget consensus agreement for the annual town meeting in the spring, the three boards had agreed to revisit and make recommendations reflecting any new information that was not available in the spring. So here we are. While everyone at home is getting their popcorn, I'm going to ask each committee to open their meeting for the purposes of these discussions, beginning with, I don't know, do we have the school committee with us, Kara?
I don't think Kara's here. This is Lynn.
Okay, Lynn, do we have?
If we have a quorum yet.
We have a quorum.
Hold on.
I think Lauren's here.
Lauren's here. Jen, are you here?
I think Linda's here as a panelist.
A panel, she's not a panelist. Okay.
And not a panelist.
I'm here too.
Okay. All right, I think we're able to open.
All right. And the Finance Committee?
I believe we have a quorum. Let's just do a quick roll call. So I'm calling the September 30th Finance Committee Meeting to order at 9:37. Walter, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Scott, I see you. Mike DeSantis?
Present.
Kathy?
I'm here.
Sarah?
Here.
My Google's speaking to me.
Jack's here.
Oh, Jack. I didn't see you on. I think that's everything.
Okay, and Scott, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee?
It's looking like we do have a quorum here, although I do not know all the members are present. Would any other members that aren't on the screen just speak up and let me know you're here? I know Sarah, you're here. Anyone else from CIP? Although I think we do have quorum.
Mike Beck's here.
Okay.
Mike Chubb is here.
And we have enough quorum and we can open the Capital Improvement.
Sharon Friedman is here as well.
Yep. Yeah, you were on the screen earlier. I saw you, Sharon. So we will open the Capital Improvement Program Committee Meeting as well.
Okay, Kevin, have I forgotten anything? Or do you want to proceed to Agenda Item 2? You're up.
Excellent. Thank you, Carrie, and thank you, Mr. Chair. We're ready to go if you are.
All right, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much for the opportunity tonight. And so here in 3A B, we have Director Lee Azanaro with us, our DPW Director. Our Water Division Manager Kurt Gaffney is with us. Mark Cook, Highway Division Manager, is with us. Town Accountant Matt Wylett's here, and also the Assistant Town Manager and Finance Director Barry LaCasse is with us tonight. And thank you for all getting together in this GoToWebinar. We've been very busy trying to be able to pull most recent information together in order to have a conversation with all of you tonight in regards to the three things that the chairman had pointed out, which is PFAS and well improvements, followed by the work that hasn't been done on the Department of Public Works Highway Division for highway, sewer, and water vehicles that are going to be needed. In addition to at least bring up the topic for today for the recommendations for our consensus meeting. So we do have another meeting booked. It's just a little over two weeks from today. It's going to be on the 15th. So that way it's important that no one feels pressured in any way whatsoever to have to actually make decisions tonight. If you are, that's great. If not, we have our consensus meeting. That's for the 15th, which our invitations would be going out for that meeting, but we did send a save the date. To at least at this point, I know FinCom and the School Committee have a save the date for the 15th. I mentioned to Scott, but I don't know if a separate invitation has gone out for the 1015 consensus meeting for CIP, but there will be some other opportunity for after tonight as well. So at this time, for the second point of the, on the agenda item for this evening, I'm going to turn it over. We're working from one computer here in 3A B tonight, so you'll see us having to switch seats when different people have to come up and answer some questions and for their pieces of the presentation tonight. And so to start off, we have Director Azanaro with us. And so Lee, I'm going to ask you to come up and be able to have your discussion everyone tonight.
Good evening. So I am going to try to put a PowerPoint on so you can see the PowerPoint as I go through my presentation. Okay. PFAS requirements for drinking water. This is the main part of our discussion this evening, and I'll just give a very brief introduction. PFAS is polyfluorocyanide substances that, we have information on this on our website, Mansfield website, and the Water Division, there is a notice on PFAS which gives more information than I am going to be talking about tonight. So if anybody at home wants to look it up, it has all the information what PFAS is. The areas where PFAS can be found, which range from food, commercial household products, workplace, drinking water, living organisms. Again, this information's all on the website, so I'm going to skip to what effects, where we are today. PFAS standards. The first step was in 2016 EPA published a Drinking Water Health Advisory. And I emphasize advisory because it was not a requirement for any of the communities, and their advisory is for 70 parts per trillion. And then the Mass D P started looking at it and looking at lowering that. And then on June 12th, 2019, they asked the communities to voluntarily start testing PFAS. On September 30th, 2019, Mansfield started the first round of full finish water testing, and everything was below the 20 parts per trillion, I would emphasize. Then on December 2019, Mass D P proposed the PFAS drinking water regulation with the maximum contaminant level of 20 parts per trillion for six PFAS compounds. Again, they proposed that. There was voted, but it was still not a law. April 14th, 2020, another quarterly round of testing, and Kate Springs tested at 22.4 parts per trillion. There were some retests in May, which again were higher. We looked at different options, but it stayed above 20. On June 3rd, 2020, I did a PFAS update with the Board of Selectment Meeting. Then August 6th, 2020, Walsh Well tested at 22.9 parts per trillion, which again was the first time. Then last week, I think, I believe it was on September 24th, that Mass D P finalized the regulations. And these will actually be effective on October 2nd, 2020. And the requirements are for large communities to be required to test starting in January, and communities our size will be required as of April 2021. I'd like to point out that back last summer, when this first came out, Kurt and I and the Town Manager did have a discussion whether we should test or we should wait. And Kevin suggested like if we have something, it's better to find out sooner than later. Let's go ahead and start testing. So we started testing well before it actually became law, which was just last week. Just, somebody sent me this because we keep talking about parts per trillion. This is just an example of a few things that are one part per trillion. Like you say, one postage stamp in the area of the city of Dallas, that's a part per trillion. This is what we're talking about here. 20 parts per trillion is the limit. I would just like to give a little more of a background that after we experienced, you know, we had concerns with the first well, but when after we experienced the second well of going down, we took a step back to look at our overall system. Because the loss of two wells was approximately 1.2 million gallons per day. Our annual peak day demand on the water system is the range of 3.5 to 4 million gallons per day in the summertime. So based on our experience, we also believe that it's possible that we could experience PFAS at other wells in the future. Prescott being the first that comes to mind because it's just down gradient of the Kate Springs well. The Mansfield Water System includes a number of wells throughout the town, which is good for redundancy, and we can usually work through a problem with a single well. However, the current situation with PFAS is serious concerns regarding our ability to meet the day-to-day demands on our water system if we are unable to use multiple wells. Therefore, in order to minimize future risk to our water supply, we are proposing to add PFAS removal treatment at Kate Springs and Walsh Wells to make improvements in the production of water at Walsh Wells and Prescott Wells number 89, as well as SCADA upgrades throughout. If adopted, these improvements will help us keep up with the water demand on the system. One thing before we start talking about the specific wells and numbers, I'd like to caution everyone that we are using preliminary information, and although we try to estimate conservatively, the current uncertain climate adds additional risk to estimates. So as designs progress and bidding, we will keep everyone informed. I'd also like to mention that we've taken, because of the, this is something that we're going to be moving on quickly. We plan on taking an added step of having an engineering peer review done of the, as we start moving forward with designs on the projects that we're proposing. Now, the first one, Kate Springs, the slide in front of you, that's what people may not know, is right, right on the bend as you go from the industrial park heading east on Maple Street. That's the Kate Springs well. This is a slide of the existing old building, which now is just being used to store some parts. And the garage door that you're looking at, that is the area that is being proposed to add the treatment vessels. What we are proposing is PFAS removal treatment, which would be vessels with carbon. This would remove all of the PFAS down to zero. Again, this is, this is, this is, this is an estimate. And again, this is just for Kate Springs. Moving on, Walsh Well. Walsh Well is on the far west side of Mansfield, right off of Gilbert Street. There's an aerial view. The red, the Walsh Well is an odd situation that we have actually well fields, vacuum well system, and the fields are on either side of the river as marked up in red. And the rest is the shows with the treatment plant and the tanks out there. This slide shows a better view of the building. What we propose here would be, again, adding PFAS treatment, which would be a building either next to or right behind the existing building that you're looking at here. And also to change the way the well, the well system is done from being a vacuum system that they're basically sucking it out of the ground to a gravity system that would go into a tank and then have it come from the tank back. Again, that's details that we can go into more later on. But this would bring the total for Walsh Wells to approximately $6.67 million. Prescott Wells are located about halfway between the municipal complex and Kate Springs in Maple Park. They are fairly close to each other. We've been having problems with production from these wells for a number of years. And Kurt already had on the CIP future years for design and construction of improvements to be able to increase production at these wells. These are just basically a small, small building with a well. And the proposal is that they've already done pilot testing out there and probably replaced each with two satellite wells within probably less than 100 yards of the existing wells. The cost of Prescott Wells number 89 is roughly 2.8 million. And we, as part of the Prescott Plant, we also need to replace the green sand and the green sand in the pipe and filter number one. So that is why that is included here. That 70,000 was already on the CIP. Scater improvements as part of all of the projects that I just discussed, those include SCADA improvements for all those areas. And this would be to update the SCADA for the rest of the system that isn't being included in those three project locations that I just discussed. So this is a very large number, but the total for these improvements is $13,920,000. Again, and as far as we fully expect that there will be variables between one area and one well and another as far as the numbers, but this is the amount that we are requesting. I think at this time, to break for, we'll open up the questions. Kurt is here, can answer specific questions.
Hi, Lee. This is Evan. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Frank Lee. I'm going to ask everyone who's not on the Finance Committee to close their cameras and we'll, I know the Finance Committee has a number of questions. We'll start with them. Okay, and then we'll proceed. We'll do CIPC last because many of the members are in the other committees also. Then we'll be able to focus on the questions from the members, excuse me, from the members who are not on other boards. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
There's a lot of feedback, so if everyone can mute themselves that is not speaking, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
I don't know if the Finance Committee, our questions are related to the financials, including the request for the the bond access note and payments and all the process. And they tried to get those to Barry along with the request that maybe he walked through the funding mechanism and how he anticipated paying for this. I mean, people see a $14 million number and they're going to get, in the words of somebody, sick. It makes them very concerned about all of a sudden we have a $14 million bill kind of facing us. Frank, I might suggest if Barry could do a presentation on how this would be paid, what he is recommending to us. And then Barry, I know you might already have answers to the questions I forwarded you. And then we can go back to FinCom to kind of fill in anything missing, if that would work, Frank.
I think those are questions and responses that we'd all be interested in. So Barry, you prepared to do that?
I am. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
So obviously, a new unexpected $14 million borrow will impact the original rate projections of 5% as they were provided by our consultant, David Fox, I think back in June. Our finance plan is designed so that we can move forward with this important project without impacting the rate by more than an additional 1%. This financing plan eliminates the need for a large rate spike. Basic components. Number one, short-term interest-only borrowing. Short-term borrowing this $14 million project allows us the ability to pay interest only for fiscal years FY '22 to FY '25. The estimated annual interest for these years, assuming a 2% rate of interest, would be about $340,000. The second component is to build a budget, build budget capacity for principal payments when they become due in FY '26. We need to begin building debt service capacity into each of these same four years so that by FY '26, when we switch to long-term borrowing and begin to pay principal and interest, there would be no rate spike. This will be done by budgeting, but not spending an additional $100,000 in FY '22 and increasing that amount by $100,000 each year through FY '25. In FY '26, it will be approximately $400,000 of debt service falling off the water budget. This $400,000 of debt service capacity in FY '26, plus the roughly $400,000 of debt service capacity that was built in over these previous four years, will then cover the approximate $800,000 of principal and interest needed for the $14 million borrowing when we go long-term. That is, in essence, the financing plan for this $14 million project.
Barry, I had sent a number of questions to you from FinCom. I don't know if it's easier if you want to walk down them if you had a specific order, if you want me to read them for the public, and then you can address them. But we had a number in terms of the financing of this, whether it makes sense, and other things that I know were potentially considered about rolling into this. So what's the easiest?
Well, I appreciate the questions in advance from the FinCom. I'm hoping that between Lee and my presentation, we answered quite a few of them, but I'm happy to go through them one by one and either address them or just, at that point, we'll just address them one by one. How's that?
I think that's great. And then at the end, I can turn it over to the rest of FinCom for any questions they might have thought of since we've gotten the materials and since I gave you.
Sure, of course. So I'll start with the question of what is the term of the bond? The bond, when we go long-term, is 30 years. We could go 40 years, but we decided that 30 years makes more sense. The expected interest rates for, at least for the temporary borrowing, which is the interest only, is assumed to be 2%. We don't know what the interest rates are going to be in 2026 when we go long. Do we believe the interest rates will materially change between this group issuing its recommendation and the town acting at Fall Meeting on November 7th? No, we don't expect any material changes in that assumed 2% interest rate. Is the ban taken out by Mansfield or DPW Water Department? Only the town can issue debt, so it would be the town. The debt service obviously would be budgeted in the Water Department budget. Are all the projects laid out in the CIP report rolled into one ban, or are they done under multiple? It's one ban. The payment for that ban would be split up between the Water Department and general government, which has a few vehicles, and that we'll get into in a few minutes. Is there any benefit to structuring it differently? No, we've reviewed this with our financial advisor, and this is the, this is the option that makes the most sense. What is the expected increase to the average household water bill as a percentage in hard dollars? We reached out to our consultant, David Fox. So if this $14 million is adding 1% on top of the 5% that has already been approved by the Select Board, then, for example, on a $200 water bill, it would be $202. Was this project raised on your recent call with Standard and Poor's, and did they have any feedback? Yes, it was. We discussed it with Standard and Poor's. They're well aware of it. The only, there was no feedback really because this is rate-driven debt. If the original problem was identified in April, why is it only being raised now? Was Mansfield doing more testing to ascertain the scope of the problem before exploring solutions? I believe Lee addressed the timing and the chronology of the PFAS issue beginning back in late fall of last year and how that came to be in urgent matter this past April and in the summer. So I think that that timeline makes sense. Are there any costs associated with additional testing measures? If so, will those be built into the next fiscal year water sewer budget or are they included in this project? So additional testing measures are always operating expenses, so they are in this year's budget. They will be in next year's budget. Again, it's just an operating expense. You had some other questions in there, Brian. Where are the funds coming from, from the water system and the DPW in this new debt? So the bulk of the $14 million borrowing will of course be absorbed by the Water Department budget and under the terms I just explained. And then the second part of it is, there's a small portion of the borrowing that would be absorbed by general government for a few vehicles. Can you review the ban structure?
I think you did that one already.
Why can't the town roll some of the additional funds from the state into this project to reduce the overall costs? It's a good question, but it's really bad practice to take general government funds and put them into an enterprise system which is rate-driven. The rate is supposed to cover the costs, the operational costs, the debt costs, and the capital project costs of the enterprise system. Can Lee confirm that there are no other water projects at this time that we would benefit from rolling into this ban? I believe that these improvements, this project is the most pressing Water Department need right now. I know that the CIP for the Water Department has other projects, but this, at this point, makes the most sense to go forward with this project as laid out by Lee. I hope that answers the questions that you had sent to me, Brian.
It does. I'd like to go and give a round to everybody else and see if they have additional. And I actually had thought of one or two while you were speaking, and I'll go last. Scott, since I see you right in the middle of my screen, why don't you start if you have any additional questions? We can't hear you, Scott.
I was muted. Now, I think the issues as far as what we can know have covered pretty well. I mean, unfortunately, we have a heck of a lot of uncertainty ahead of us that is beyond our control at this time. I think all we can do is get the projects underway. And I do believe that there are some advantages to making sure we get started, we get started expeditiously. I'd like to hear, you know, that addressed like the issues that might be associated with delay.
That's a great question. I'll leave that to Lee or Kevin.
Thank you, Barry, and thank you. That's really a good question and a good point, Scott, because part of what the team has done here is that once we found out the notification of just a few weeks ago with the issue at the Walsh Well, when it was only the issue with Kate Springs, while that was an issue, as Lee mentioned, that took 940,000 gallons. as Lee mentioned, that took 940,000 gallons offline. And then, all of a sudden, when we had the 22 parts per trillion hit at Walsh Well, that caused now another issue for now over 1.2 million gallons being out of the system on a daily basis. So what the Water Department did in coming together with Lee and our team here was to be able to do immediate analysis, because timing really is of the essence. The reason why I say that is Lee pointed out the fact it needs to get into design, and it needs to get into design to then get into construction in order to at least get Kate Springs back online by next summer. And so our summer demand usually starts by June. So it is our hope that by June 2021, we can actually have Kate Springs back online. And so, as Lee said, if typical summer usage of our demand is between 3.5 and 4 million gallons, by losing 1.2 million gallons out of the system, that creates an issue. The other thing that I just wanted to highlight, which I also think is important, is the importance of the fact of what we do as it relates to the public's drinking water. And so soon as we found out that there was an issue at Kate Springs, and as we updated the Select Board months ago, we took Kate Springs offline. So it is available if there is an emergency. So just so all the boards and committees tonight know, for example, if there was a fire, we can bring Kate Springs back online in order to deal with that water demand, but then immediately shut it off thereafter. And that was also in consultation and for the proper requirements for DEP. And DEP is the Department of Environmental Protection, who permits the 351 cities and towns for their drinking water. So those are important points. And the most important thing for us is to get Kate Springs back online by June 2021, and of course Walsh Wells to follow. But the importance of the other thing that I just wanted to make sure that we highlighted this evening for you was particularly because of the fact, we took a look at the entire distribution system. So Kurt Gaffney is here with us tonight for any specific things that I may not be able to answer directly for you. He's really the mastermind behind the system for his years of experience, of decades of service here in Mansfield. There are redundant things in a normal way to meet the normal demand if the wells are in operation. However, we're also trying to prepare as part of dealing with this issue is that if another well happens to spike over the 20 parts per trillion. So we have a series of wells in different areas of the town. And if they start to have a PFAS issue, we need to make sure that we can still deal with the production of finished water into the distribution system and into the tanks. And that's really important. So as part of this project, it's not just dealing with PFAS. PFAS removal is definitely needed at Kate Springs and definitely needed at Walsh Wells. However, what Kurt did is to do study over the distribution system, because the wells are permitted for more than what we can actually draw out of them today. So as the agenda item that's been placed on the Select Board's agenda for tonight, it's PFAS removal and well improvements. So for example, today Walsh Wells is permitted for 1.5 million gallons of withdrawal on a daily basis. However, today, we can only get a half a million gallons out of that finished water for the way that it's designed and that it's operating. So part of the amount that Lee had mentioned tonight as part of that project will also to be able to make changes to be able to draw more water out of Walsh Well. The same type of thing for Prescott, number eight, and number nine. So we're looking at the distribution system in its entirety to be able to, A, deal with PFAS, or B, also to have additional production capability in the event that there are another PFAS hit in other wells. So we're trying to be able to take this as a comprehensive review. And again, this was done relatively very quickly over the past couple of weeks in order to be able to have this education discussion with all of you this evening. So I hope that helps out as part of the analysis that's been done in order to get to this point of where we are tonight to speak with all of you.
That helps a whole lot, because not only are we trying to resolve an issue with the safety of our drinking water, we're trying to improve our capacity of drinking water, which has always been an issue ever since I've lived in the town. So you're talking about generating more safe capacity of water and making it easier to meet our peak needs. And I mean, obviously, it's going to cost us money now, but I mean, if we don't take these steps, what might it cost us in the future?
Well, I can tell you right now, if we went on a permanent water ban, then we have a whole nother set of issues that we could have. And when you're not selling the water to create and sustain the budget that you have, then you have to raise the rate even higher, because you wouldn't be putting out in your distribution system anywhere between 3.5 and 4 million gallons. You'd be doing at least half of that. So it does cause a whole nother set of issues, for sure. Thank you.
Do you have any additional questions?
Oh, that's good. Okay, thank you.
Kathy, you're next on my list.
Great, thank you. Couple of quick questions. These numbers are obviously huge, so they're being scrutinized quite closely. One question that comes to my mind is how this new regulation was rolled out in the middle of a pandemic? I mean, I guess I'm just really, I'm really confused, because Mansfield, relatively speaking, is doing pretty well, but there are a number of communities that it just strikes me as this would be a very hard bill for them to absorb and to raise rates on their constituents. So can you just help me understand a little bit more about the timing of how this was all rolled out? And just so I have the context of, it seems like a quick turnaround. And I have to believe we're not the only community that has PFAS contamination above 20 parts per trillion. So if anybody has context on that, it would be helpful.
I have, actually, some communities, especially communities that have airports or Air Force bases, like we have up, I think, up in Endover and then in the Cape. This community, and I think even in Tucker, these communities, they have orders of magnitude higher than what we have. Yeah, I think somewhere it's 700 or 1,000. But there's also, they're continuing to study this, and some are saying that any PFAS, because it's what they call, it doesn't go away. It's one of these chemicals that's forever, that they call. So they're recommending that it go down to zero. And they're even looking at it now, even on the wastewater side. There's possibilities that in the future, we may have to be removing it on the other side also. The reality is that there are communities worse off. That's why, I didn't mention earlier, but we had applied for a $200,000 design grant. And on the same day that they announced when the regulations were taken effect, they also issued, amongst the communities who got the grants, and it was communities who had, I guess, demographics mostly different than Mansfield, or they had much worse situations. We are continuing to see if there's any other funds. We're actually meeting, doing a meeting with DEP next week with staff to see if, because there's going to be more rounds. So we are pursuing any other avenues to see if there's any other grants from DEP. But I don't believe it's going to go away. My understanding is, at the national level, it's precious for them to lower it from the 70. I believe Consumer Reports put something out about PFAS. This is being discussed at the national level. So it's one of those, it may not be a lot different. Actually, this is actually now a regulation, but when we started treating the, for iron and manganese, it was considered aesthetic. Now it's a regulation. In this case, it's already a regulation. So I think we need to be proactive. I think the people would expect us to do everything we can to make sure that the drinking water is as safe to drink as we can. I don't see as we had much of a choice here, given the situation. In the future, if we don't take action, I believe that we would, may have to put the water bans on, like the town manager was just referring to. And that would be catastrophic to our revenue stream. And again, and I think would be upsetting to a lot of our residents. So it would have a double impact on us.
Lee, I just had a quick question. Am I correct that, one, while we are slightly above the Massachusetts levels, we are well below the EPA? And that right now, according to the regulations, and Kathy, I think this goes through, there is no penalty if we do not bring it down? So if we had to wait, if towns or other towns were struggling, did not, there is no penalty for not resolving this immediately, correct? The state doesn't fine us if we don't bring it down right now. So I don't know, Kathy, if that addresses, if others are in similar situations.
So Brian, could you just repeat that? I want to make sure that I could hear clearly, because we're sitting farther away from the table, please.
Yeah, no, so two things. One, we are slightly above the Massachusetts level, but we are below the EPA, which was established in 2016. And Massachusetts has not implemented any penalties for failure to bring it beneath the 20 million parts per trillion, correct? There is no financial, if we took, for argument's sake, five years to fix this, the state doesn't fine us, they do not tell us anything. Just right now, it's, this is their suggestion, get it below that level, but there is no financial implication to us for failure to do that.
At this point in time, you're right, there's not a financial penalty. But where there is a liability that exists is, A, because PFAS and drinking water above what they have stated at 20 parts per trillion causes what they feel that can be a health issue. And that's why we ended up posting the information on the Water Division's website on the town's webpage, number one. Number two, what DEP has said, that if you don't take steps to address the PFAS once you're on notice that you're above the 20 parts per trillion per, at that point, quarterly testing, if you don't, then they're going to decide whether the wells stay up or they cut them off from usage at all. So that's their enforcement that they end up having if you choose not to deal with it.
Kathy, I'm going to go back to you. It was your question, so you're still up.
One more quick question. When you and Lee were evaluating potential options to remediate the level, can you just humor me? I'm not an engineer, obviously, but did you explore perhaps building new wells or like maybe creating one super well with one treatment system? You know, like rather than fixing and repairing each well? And I mean, I don't know how much each well's capacity is, but if there might have been an optimal solution to not have to implement remediation on all of them over time? Like, was that explored?
Yeah, what I can tell you is that if the cost to construct new wells and treatment systems would far surpass anything of what this $14 million represents.
Okay, I assumed it was prohibitively expensive.
Yeah, so the nice thing, for example, as Lee showed you earlier tonight, that at Kate Springs, there is an older building that's not in use right now at that well site. So we don't have to build a new building at Kate Springs. We can use and rehab an existing building that's across from the treatment plant right now. So again, that provides a couple million dollar savings right then and there, where, for example, at the Walsh Well, there's going to have to be either an addition onto the existing building, because there needs to be an additional treatment process for this PFAS that has to be added. And it does certainly take space for the tanks and for the filtration systems that are based on carbon that are going to end up having to be constructed.
Okay, thanks very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Sarah, you're next on my screen.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good.
So first of all, I want to say thank you for all your attention to the safety of our water and all the work that you went into this. What is, unfortunately, it's just concerning that this price tag comes at a time when we're trying to really look at a lot. And with all the financial issues that we're dealing with, I think the justification for it is certainly there, and we're certainly going to scrutinize this a bit. And then thank you for everything you've done. My question really is, can we start thinking long-term? As you mentioned, that there's more things that might be coming down the line. If there are things we need to be building into the capital improvements planning project for large projects like this, I would like some more foresight into that in our planning, even if they don't come to pass or we push them off because of certain things. I think that will help in our long-term financial planning, especially as we're probably going to need a lot of capital improvements over the next 10 years. I think that would, I would look to your leadership on what we should be thinking of to be proactive about this, so we're not caught quite off guard like it seems like we are this year.
I can tell you, as far as the PFAS, neither Kurt nor I anticipated to be having this discussion if someone had asked us a year ago. So there's no way, there's other things on the CIP that we had expected to be doing and to be focusing on. Adding PFAS treatment was not on the list. That is, that wasn't even talked about until we took the hit in April, and then we started looking at different options. And again, I don't see that there's any other option. And I do believe strongly that eventually we will also hit at the Prescott Wells. We gave some of the funded mandates. Yes, but I think because it affects people's health, doesn't give us a lot of options.
Well, and what I want to iterate is that let's, once we get past this, let's try to be proactive on that. And then let's try and get this into the planning ahead of time. And we want to be supportive of you in this effort. And we appreciate all the work that you've done on this. Thank you.
I can tell you, we definitely try. Mansfield, it was way ahead of all our neighbors as far as building the treatment plants for iron and manganese. And I think at this point, I'm not sure, I know some of our neighbors do have problems that they've done testing, and there's others that I'm not sure they even begun testing yet. So yes, we try to be proactive.
And so thank you for that.
Do you have anything else, Sarah?
No, I'm done.
Walter?
Just quickly, it doesn't have to be answered now, but for Barry and Kevin, I know under, you know, certain brownfields laws and EPA laws and different type of governmental programs for remediation and things like that, there were 0% loans available. If someone could check on those before our next meeting, that would be great. And thank you for the presentation.
Well, I'll take care of that.
Okay.
All right.
Well said.
All right, Mike DeSantis, you're up.
Yep, thank you. Great presentation, Lee. Thank you. I do have a question for Barry, though. Barry, on the... Wait a second, he's going to be taking a seat. Okay. All right, we have to keep switching seats. We only have one camera here. That's fine.
I think you need a second camera in your budget.
Yeah. You mentioned, I think you said, I wrote down, the loan is interest-only until 2026 and converts into PNI after that point. If I'm not mistaken. I guess, and you also mentioned that at that point, you'll try to figure out what the interest rate's going to be, which we don't know. My question is, is that has anybody looked into as to why we can't do a 30-year now, knowing what the interest rates are practically at zero today? I mean, at 2%. Let me just finish, where you just have four years of interest only, and then at the end of that period, it goes to PNI at that point and four years later. So it ends up being for 26 years and fixed. It can even go at 35. I mean, go up to 40, actually, is what you said. So rather than, I mean, rather than trying to wait for the unknown, we know interest rates are probably close, if not at a slowest point ever. So, you know, do we want to gamble on four years? Because I'm not so sure they're going to be this slow. So the question is, can we do, construct a 30-plus bond now, interest-only for four years, converting into PNI in year five?
We had our financial advisor run a proposed schedule for, it's not a 0% for the first five years, it's a very low principal, and then interest in larger principal after five years. And the model that she wrote, that she gave us, was was something that we could not afford, because the ban interest rate at 2% is knowable now. But if we went out to market for a long-term bond structured with the five-year of low principal and then larger interest and principal after five years, the interest rate that she is projecting on that was much larger, double the 2%. That's just what her projection was. So the interest rates for a ban are different than... That's just what her projection was. So the interest rates for a ban are different than the interest rates for a long-term bond. But we did have her run that schedule. So yes.
Then help me out here, Barry, for a second. If he ran it saying that it's 2% and then it'd be 4% four years from now, it was unaffordable. You're telling me that if interest rates go to 4% in four years, that it still becomes affordable at that point?
No, because by the time 2026 comes around, Mike, that $400,000 of debt service that we have on the books now is dropping off. That's going to provide us the capacity to afford this project, the principal and interest going forward without the rate spike I talked about earlier.
The 400,000, is that, so that, is that an annualized, or how, where is the 400,000 interest? Holding for the, for the, the bond that we're talking about?
There's two components to the, that happened in 2026. One is $400,000 falling off our debt service schedule. So that creates $400,000 of capacity. The second component is by building into the budget, beginning in FY '22, the $100,000 increasing by, every year by another $100,000. That by 2026 will build us another $400,000 of debt service capacity for a total of $800,000 of capacity in 2026. When we go long-term and pay, stop paying principal and interest, the estimated payment on that long-term borrowing will be about $800,000. That's how we sort of flatten the curve, if you will, and provide that capacity in 2026 without a rate spike.
Um, okay, I, you know what? The 400,000 drop off anyways, right? Come hell or high water.
Yes.
I mean, so I'm not sure why this, I just don't see the comparison. I mean, I don't know what she's using for a long-term estimated rate four years from now. You know, just because we, our debt rate drops off 400, then can't that be assumed in the bond of whatever, whatever institution wants to pick it up? When they look at Mansfield's financials and say, okay, they have a $400,000 debt reduction, therefore it's, I mean, I guess I just don't see it. You know, and I'm not sure what we're gambling on interest rates now for four years from now.
Well, I guess the issue is, she's very confident that on a ban, we can get 2%. On a long-term note, right now, in the structure we just talked about, her prediction, her projection is, is more than the 2%, it's the 4%. That's the difference. And I can send you that schedule if you'd like, but that's.
I'm, I'm just kind of surprised it's that high, that's all. I mean, look, look, now, I don't know what 30-year T notes are running. I mean, I could quickly check it at some point, uh, but it seems, that seems awful high to me on a 30-year T.
But I think to move this along, and Mike, we're not going to take a vote tonight, but Barry, I think it would be helpful if you just sent those scenarios to Mike. You could send them to all FinCom.
Yeah, of course.
It gives them time to look them over. And Mike, we continue the discussion. But Barry, I don't want to put you on the spot without the, all the information right in front of you.
Well, the 30, I'm just looked it up. The 30-year T note rates running 1.41. And she's at 4%. That's extraordinary.
Well, you're talking, I mean, that, you're just talking straight debt. I mean, we, we had some features in there you have been referring to, Barry, that we want on those debt, those features cost you something.
Well, again, I'm relying on her expertise, but I'm happy to share those schedules with you.
And what I recommend, and, and again, I do want to keep this moving along. I know others want to get their voices in. Is, Mike, after you look at it, if you still have questions, Barry, maybe it's the type of thing we can set up a call with her and have a conversation. You might have a.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't want to muddy the water. I'm just saying, you know, I'd rather not gamble on higher interest rates four years from now. If we can lock in something today, something reasonable. And, you know, like I said, T notes are 1.4. So I don't think there'd be much over that for the town of Mansfield, but I could be wrong.
Barry, when, when you, when you do that, can you just look, I know when, when they, when they float bonds, they, they have that list of recent, of recent offerings. They might, if you grab one of those recent offerings, just to show how the structures look.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Mike, did you have any other questions?
I really don't. Again, thank you very much. Great presentation. Glad we're on top of it. Excellent, guys. Thank you again. Thank you.
Jack?
Uh, just real quick, great presentation. And I think this is obvious, but you know, we're looking at two treatment systems, one pump station and upgrade. Um, we've got quotes in all of these, right? We're not just taking the first available quote. That's probably for Lee. And the second small question is, I think it makes sense to do it in one ban, one loan. But if we had to prioritize between getting like maybe one treatment station over another, is that a possibility? Or it just makes sense to do the three or four projects all at once, the 14 million in total?
Yeah. So good questions, Jack. They, I think with your second question, it makes all of sense in the world to address all these issues at one time for the reasons that both Kevin and Lee highlighted. What, what was your first question again?
Uh, just, I'm sure we got multiple quotes on the treatment sounds, right? Okay.
Well, so these are estimates from our engineers. If this is approved at town meeting, then our next step is to go into design. And as part of the design is to develop bid documents and then go out to bid. And that's when you know exactly how much the project will cost. So, but these are estimates from our, by our consultants.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Walt, you have another question?
Barry, are we going to do the same thing? Are they going to be bid separately and then bid as a package when you bid them to see if we can get any?
We want to address that. Our goal is to advance Kate Springs. We may actually bid the treatment vessels possibly this winter. And ahead of the, the full bid document, so we can procure them separately, because it's a long lead time to try to get them in. So that we can get them set up at least on a temporary basis by June. The Walsh well, because of the plant and the improvements to the well field is more complex. We estimate that that may be, may be a 24-month project. We don't have, we don't have it exact yet. So, but we need to start the process. Otherwise, you're just pushing.
You don't, you don't have to explain all that. My question was, are we going to bid? And I know that for the DPW and the fire station went out and bought the generators ahead of time, et cetera. And I know the question is, are we going to bid them separately or is it a big package to one, see if we get one contractor again? Or are we going to bid them separately and compare the pricing?
They have to be separate in order to expedite Kate Springs.
All right, thank you.
Um, I, I just had two last questions. One, Lee, this is to you. The first one, which is, so we already have two wells that are over the limit. And I thought, I heard you said, there's a chance another one could go over the limit. Or the expectation is, this isn't the type of problem that just disappears. Is there any concern about rolling in additional precautionary measures? Because my concern is, okay, we start doing this and you guys keep testing and discover early next year, oh, we got another well that's over limit. We got to shut that one down. So I guess how are we planning for what could be coming down the pipe? Is that considered?
The most likely, again, I could be wrong, because we were surprised to get Walsh. But the one I see most likely, because I believe, uh, our, our levels are around 15 parts per trillion, is Prescott wells. And we, we haven't been able to draw as much water as we would like out of that area. So although we need to be able to pull more water, I am concerned that when we start drawing more water out of there, that we could see it increase because it is just downstream of Kate Springs. We are already thinking of a plan, uh, to, to take water from, treated water from Kate Springs and blend it to the treatment plant to bring it below 20 if that happens. So for that one, and we already, and when we designed Kate Springs improvements, we already taken steps to put, to put things in place so that if we have to run a pipe through Maple Park to, to blend with some of the water coming out of the treatment plant on 500C, 500B East Street, that we'd be able to do it. So we are thinking about that. Uh, at this point, uh, the, the Albertini wells and the, and the Morrison Mahana have been, the numbers have been on the low, on, on the low side, I think, or just said around five. So barring any, any, any really major catastrophe, we, we don't see, see them rising. In the past, they haven't risen that quickly. So the most, our biggest concern right now is the Prescott, as I had mentioned earlier.
Okay, I, I'm, we can get into this later. When you said they haven't risen that quickly, but you've only been testing since, I thought you said December. Or, I mean, that doesn't give us a long time. For PFAS, I thought that you said, again, in December. So you don't know the rates at which they come in over a long period of time.
But Kate Springs was in the 15, 16 range originally. Were much higher than what we're seeing at Albertini's and Morrison Mahana.
Okay, so continuing that. And then the other question is more for Kevin and Barry, which is in regards to, I'll wait for them to come in. So Kevin, I, I guess my question is, and I guess my little one wants to jump on too. Um, you talked about a 5%, I guess effectively it becomes a 6% hit to the, to the service users. There's the 5% that was normally built-in, uh, increase. And then this would be about a 1% because of the project. We couldn't have predicted a $14 million project, so nobody's to blame. Do you have any concerns though about the burden capacity and the impact on the average taxpayer? Because we're still paying off DPW. We now have this, again, both projects where they have their value. And then any future capital projects that, that maybe in the works, you may be considering that maybe they're just a couple of years off. Is there any concern about implications for those? And if we do this, it sets us back on our ability to do other things that, that may need for the town?
Yeah, so I don't honestly, whether it's water or whether it's an impact of NFN for future construction projects or when it's time to rehabilitate the plant at 500BE Street, they all have implications on the rate. And just as much as the budgets that we approve for water and sewer, even in parking, for example, it's all user rate-based. So anything that we do have to do, it's important that, just like with any of our other capital, if we stop the capital pipeline, it ends up delaying the projects, it ends up being more costly in the end. So, you know, certainly the things that, you know, Kurt has put together for his five-year plan. Um, most of the other improvements, we'll talk about some additional things tonight. But for example, the vehicles, the vehicles were pushed off. Um, and now we've done a comprehensive review with Mark Cook, in addition to sitting down with Kurt. And we're dealing with the vehicles all together at one time in order to get these things moving, because vehicles have had to be taken offline. Uh, we're going to get into these in the specific sheets and the dollar amounts, but it's important that we continue the pipeline. Um, but as Barry also stated, you know, one of the things that's good as we go through the process, the debt's not permanent. It's like our debt exclusion that goes away. So just as much as important when the debt service is coming off, um, that it's important that we put debt service back on, particularly in the enterprise funds. So we can make sure that the plant is in good working condition. If we have to make modifications as we go along, all those things are as part of the normal way of doing business. Um, and that certainly Mansfield in the past 23 years, under Kurt's guidance, has come leaps and bounds in its water distribution system. From water main replacements to dealing with iron and manganese and issues with color of water. Um, all those things were prevalent and frequent water main breaks and things that had to be done. In 23 years, the town has made an incredible, incredible leap forward with its water distribution system and water quality. Um, and we will continue to do that. And that's going to be important, whether we're dealing with issues of PFAS, whether it's your policing vehicles, making updates to the plant, those things will definitely need to continue moving forward. Um, but we are mindful. And I think that Barry, as he explained tonight, did a wonderful job in being able to try to come up with a strategy that really creates the less impact to the user. Now, when we were listening to one of the other FinCom members tonight, talking about, well, we can just borrow it now and just do the whole thing now. And let's lock ourselves in at a rate on a 30-year note. Um, the problem with that is, Brian, to your point, we would be, end up having a significant rate increase in fiscal '22 to deal with that. And now that, to me, if I am paying my water bill and I ended up getting a very large increase, well above and beyond the 5% in the range of another several percent on top of that, I think that creates certainly an issue for all of our ratepayers in town. Um, so being able to be able to provide just an additional percent. And so looking at that opportunity for another $2 on an actual bill, that's a $200 bill. You know, I really don't see that as a major impact or making us be able to limit what we do for our capital projects. And I think it's the, the most efficient way to be able to go through and to do this without truly impacting the ratepayer a great deal.
I am a little concerned. It is, you are asking people, and I think as Kathy pointed out during a pandemic, and we knew the $200 increase was coming, the 5%, so $200, what was coming. And then I know it's only another percent, but that is, you just put on people more costs. So the, the real question, I didn't quite hear it answered, so maybe, was, was there any concern, not about just in the DPW complex? I'm sorry, not the DPW, the water systems and the needs to improve them. But in general, you're asking ratepayers, which are taxpayers who use the water system, do you now fund a $14 million project? Whether or not, that's Saturday. Did you, do you have any concerns that coming so soon after we asked them to fund the DPW, that it might cause any limits or inability to go after other projects, other large-scale projects that you think the town really needs to focus on? So it was only a question of, are you kind of weighing that against, oh, I think we're going to have to spend $50 million on another project? Maybe I'm not going to be able to ask that because it's putting too much of a burden on the individuals. Or are you comfortable with how this works out in the pay increase in total?
And I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly. It's not a $200 increase. So I, I want to make sure that we're very clear on that. Barry gave an example that if someone's water portion of their bill was $200, this project's impact would be $2.
I thought you said we already are building in a 5% and, we're building in a 5% increase, correct?
There's a 5% increase that's, that's already estimated that David Fox from Raftalus, who we use for our rate setting, that did a presentation before the board, that's, it would be a 5% increase. This particular project that we're talking about, a 14 million would have a 1% hit. And then if, if the water portion of the bill were $200, then that would be an additional $2.
So, so water, every rate user, so water users' bills are going up 6%. 5% we knew about that, that was built in, that was well aware, that's not a surprise. We, I know the select board has talked about that. And then this accounts for another 1%. So I, I got it. So I, I think I've heard the answer. I would like to suggest, I know there's another piece on the trucks and vehicles. I'd like to suggest maybe we leave that to CIP, unless FinCom has additional questions or they want to raise it right now. Just to let others go. And Kevin, I know we go on a move this long. All right. So we will discuss this further. We will take a vote and we'll consider our recommendations. Of course, after hearing from CIP and others, but we'll hold off to the next one. Kevin, we'll turn it over to whoever you would like to present on the vehicles and raise their questions. And if FinCom could turn off the cameras and let others hop on, I think we'd be benefited from that.
Hey, Brian?
Yes?
Brian, it's Frank. Do there are other committees that need to ask questions on this project?
Oh, boy. Sorry to jump into the conversation, Frank, but we'll turn off our cameras either way.
Um, I know what it's like. Uh, let's go looking, the FinCom, everyone has. Can the select board get back on, please? And let's start with Mr. Afterwards.
Can't hear you, Jess. Uh, this sounds like something that we have to do. It's not like a, a want, we need to do this, we, we have to do it. We have to provide clean water. And we just have to find the best way to pay for it. So we have to get started and do the best we can with paying for it. That's it.
Frank is next.
Frank is next.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schoenfeld.
Oh, thank you so, thank you very much, Frank. No, great presentation, guys. Overall, great questions by the finance committee. Thanks for lugging us through all that. Couple of things. We're making decisions on behalf of the ratepayers for this. And one of the questions I have is debt capacity is for the entity Mansfield, not necessarily for the entity Department of Public Works or Department, the Water Department or the Sewer. So how does debt capacity affect? You know, why can't we borrow the whole amount today? And, you know, if that's the right decision for the ratepayers to start paying the extra ten percent or extra two bucks as, as Kevin mentioned, now rather than four years from now, just to preserve interest rates like Mike, Mike mentioned, why is four hundred grand of debt capacity really an issue?
It's because the cost to pay the debt would spike in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. So that's, so.
Right. But, but the cost is being paid by the ratepayers, not by general funds. That's my point is that if we have to start paying up principal and interest on day one, not year five, that cost will be embedded in the future rates. Like we'll have the, the rate increase next July for water, for this particular provision. So you know, the debt is serviced by the rates. The debt is not serviced by general obligations or general funds, correct? Okay. So I don't think we have any limitations in when we can start taking on this debt. For, because it already is financed by rate structure. It's not financed by our general funds.
That's a true statement. And as I explained earlier, the reason we're not doing that or not recommending to do that is because in year twenty-two, in year twenty-three, the rates would spike considerably. And that's something that we took into consideration to look at what, how this affects the rate payer. So it's true, you could put principal and interest immediately, and that will spike the rate considerably. In order to avoid that, we smoothed it out interest only for five years until the debt fell off.
But that means the spike's going to happen five years from now, not next year. So again,
That's not.
You need to take me through the analysis that shows where the rate would spike. And we just finished the five percent increase on water alone. What's next year's plan with or without the, the, the debt service for this particular project and so forth? So I need to see scenarios laid out over the next five years so we can make an honest and good decision on behalf of the ratepayers, and they can be informed. And it might very well be to Mike's point, that it makes more sense to borrow today at today's locked in interest rates of one point four plus a little spread than to wait five years and gamble, like he said.
Sure. So the, the quick answer, and I'll provide you the analysis, the quick answer is that if we put eight hundred thousand dollars of debt service in FY twenty-two's budget, the rate is going to spike. If on the other hand, we put only three hundred and forty thousand dollars of interest only on the budget for FY twenty-two and continue to build the debt capacity until two thousand twenty-six, when four hundred thousand dollars of debt service drops off, the rate will not spike either now or in two thousand twenty-six.
So the four hundred thousand of debt service is coming from strictly water department debt?
Absolutely.
Okay. So that wasn't.
General government.
Got it. Got it. That was made clear earlier. But nevertheless, I think those scenarios ought to be out there. So we know exactly what we're looking, looking for. I really, I, I think another point was made, what are other communities doing? I did a quick look while we're listening to a lot of questions. The town of Pepperell, the town of Ayr, one had an eight million dollars spent for this, one had a three million dollars, dollars spent for this. I really would like to see, I think the community would like to see what other towns are doing to minimize this or kind of reduce the, the impact, impact of PFAS. Another town talked about Cambridge, the town of Cambridge talked about changing their filter medium. Do we even have a filter medium for our water? Or is it some other kind of approach?
We have six wells, I believe. I'll let, I'll let Lee address the specifics of the wells.
We, we currently, we have green sand filtration at three, three different locations. This would have to be added after it goes through the, has the iron and manganese removed. If, if we were to run it directly into the carbon, it would be, it would be more problematic with operations and maintenance.
Okay, okay. I, I just, I think the community would like to know what other towns are doing, what other towns are spending. And the last point, the last question I have is, you know, make every effort to look for grants or interest-free loans. I, I did a quick search as well. And an interest-free loan was offered back in February from the Clean Water, you, you can search for it.
We actually applied for Kate Springs before the deadline. They should be, they, they, they should be issuing, I think, something by the end of the year to see if we made that. Again, if we, if we could get zero interest for, for thirty years, that would be great. We did that on wastewater side. If we could get any partial principal forgiveness. And again, we are, we didn't get the design grant, but we are meeting, we do have a meeting set up with DEP to debrief the next Tuesday to see what can we do for the next round to, so we're continuing to, to apply for this. And my understanding is that DEP, now that they've made this into a law, that they may be putting more money into it. So we'll continue to pursue everything that's being out there and especially under the drinking water.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, I looked up, there's an article about Mass Clean Water Trust approved zero percent interest rate loan pilot program for PFAS treatment. It's out there. This was a February twenty twenty article. Who knows what's happened since then, obviously. But like you guys always do, try your best for grants, try your best for interest-free loans where the case may be is. But, you know, this is coming in front of a full town meeting. They, the residents need to know what other towns are experiencing, what other towns are paying. And to be able to make an informed decision on this borrowing, of course. So greatly appreciated, Lee, Kevin, and the finance committee for the intense review they gave you. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes, hi. Thank you, Lee and Barry for the information. I don't have too much to add other than, you know, obviously this is an unfortunate development. Nobody anticipated having to spend fourteen million dollars. That said, you know, I, I think we, we know what happens when you don't invest in the water systems properly. You know, our neighbors in Norton and, you know, I see the pictures of brown water in Norton frequently. You know, Flynn, Michigan, places like that. So I just, I don't think we have much of a choice here unless somehow the government changes his mind and decides this, these chemicals are not dangerous to human health. So, but obviously this is all coming about very quickly. So given that, I, I don't know if you can answer this question, but like on a scale of one to ten, you know, how confident are you that fourteen million is going to cover this completely?
Eight.
Eight? Okay.
Nine. I, I mean, I'll be honest, we try to be conservative. And like I mentioned before, we, we will. I've already spoken somewhere, we will have a, another engineering company do a peer review to make sure that we are doing what's more, most cost effective and most prudent for the community. We're not just taking one, one, one professional's word for it. Again, and this is similar that I've, I've done at the wastewater plant when we're spending, when we're spending large dollars. I always felt it's better to get a peer review. And so I've already spoken to someone about this. I have a, have a conference call set up. Just to make sure that we double check before we start spending the dollars.
Yeah, I think that's a wise move. So thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Trowbridge.
Thank you, everyone. You know, it's been a great presentation. We had some good questions. I think we've got some good answers. And I think we still have to flush out a couple, a couple more things. I, I recall about twenty years ago being in CIP and, you know, Kurt coming in and saying he needed ten million dollars roughly for, you know, manganese and, and iron removal. And I said to myself, this guy's crazy. What I didn't know is he was way ahead of his time. You know, I've seen all the projects that Kurt has done over the years. And, you know, drinking water is something that, you know, a lot of people take it, you know, for granted. That's not something we can take for granted. This is something we need every single day. And Kurt and Lee have done a great job on our water system. I drink it right out of the tap. And I'm proud to say that. So, you know, this is money that's a lot of money, but I think it's money that we need to spend and have to spend and should spend. So, thank you.
Okay, just one quick comment and then a quick question. On the borrowing for, for this, the Massachusetts general laws would not allow for a four-year interest only loan. There has to be some level of principal payment, and it would be significant within the first two years. So if we're concerned about spikes, that's something that has to be taken into account. And I think that's why Barry and, and our municipal advisor have come up with these scenarios rather than an interest only loan for four years, because that's, that's not allowed. Please confirm that Barry. It's been a while for me, but I think that's when you speak to, to them. But that's, that's my understanding. My question again, Lee, is from the other side of Mr. Ryan's question, when he asks, is, is this enough money? My concern is, is if we're going to, is this authorization large enough? Because if we go ahead and authorize fourteen million dollars or so, and the projects end up being more, you know, it's a borrowing. You're going to have to come back to tell me. So I think it's a question for Kevin or Barry. You know, above the financing, yes, this is.
We, we anticipate that we would definitely have enough money for Kate Springs. We believe we would also have enough for Walsh. Those were the, the, and the priorities are in that order. So i- if, if we ran into difficulties, then we would have to come back to talk about the Prescotts. Borrowing anything totally unexpected, that would be the order.
Right. So the, the borrowing authorization would be structured with enough, enough flexibility to give us some flexibility. And once you went through the process with, with the engineers, if there were any indication that this is going to cost, that things are going to cost more, that would be brought forward quickly.
Yes. And that's, that's why I'm already talking to the peer reviewers.
All right. Thanks very much. And now the moment we've all been waiting for, and they have a school committee members. You want to get back on the screen and ask any questions?
I think we only have one question. So I don't know if we need to get back on. Linda can't unmute herself. So the question that she just wanted to ask was, again, our confidence out of the, any impact of this on the schools? You know, assuming once all this is fixed, there's no, that the schools will be fine.
I, I, I think I don't expect any impact of the schools. Again, if we didn't, if we don't take action, then I don't know what the impact would be. I think, I think it's important that we take action. Because I think, I think the, the effects, from my understanding, is most problematic for, for younger children and pregnant mothers.
So, okay, thank you. And the Scott, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, focusing on the members who haven't had an opportunity to ask questions.
Do we have any CIP members? And Sharon, since you were the first on the screen, I'd like to start with you. Do you have not had the opportunity so far to ask? And I think Evan already had a question.
Yes. So first of all, the, the presentations and the questions have been wonderful. I guess one of my questions is, and I was glad to hear that a couple of the wells only have low PFAS schedules. But we also have some pretty major development planned for town. One of them, if they go through, for example, is the community gardens, and that's going to be taking a tremendous amount of water to, to work with. And I'm not sure how many other developments are going to be large water users in the industrial parks. So as there is, as there are more demand on the system, does that, and, and more water is, is needed, does that affect any of the PFAS levels? And do we really need to, does it behoove the town to begin to look at maintenance for the other wells as, as development is considered?
Our biggest concern with the P, with, with the wells down is our ability to maintain the big, the big demands on the system. The, during the winter time, we don't expect to need the wells. The, the summer, the summer impacts are far greater than, I believe, the, the gardens, where they use twenty-five thousand gallons a day.
Our average, average to me is one point nine million gallons per day. In the summertime, it can reach almost four million gallons. That's the problem. And it's not just, it's the peak you worry about. It's the demand time. The demand time runs from five in the morning to about twelve in the, about twelve or one o'clock. And in those, at that time, we have to make sure we have enough water to keep up with the demand time. The one thing is, I wanted to say that nobody's mentioned, if we do not go forward with this, as of January first, if I run those wells for any reason at all, we have to go to public notification. It's mailing a letter to everybody in town that drinks the water that we've given water with PFAS in it. And that could be a problem because PFAS is, if you, you read the, what's on the town report, I mean, the town website, you know, it's, it's a little, little, little bit nervous if you, if you look at it and read it. But as far as it goes, if we, right now, my goal is to get eight and nine back up where it's supposed to be delivering water and getting moss to give us the one point two million gallons of water there. The town of Mans would be very well for many, many years down the road. I have a very well supply of water. And my other concern is, as someone mentioned about Apatini wells, Apatini wells and the Morrison Mahana wells, there's only one well over there that has a little PFAS in it, over twenty, but we're not going to run it. It's only one point, hundred fifty thousand gallons a day, and it doesn't make a difference. But that particular station over there, Morrison Mahana have very little PFAS in it. And so we, we mix the water when it comes out and it's only like five coming out of it. Races from testing it. I started testing last, in last August.
Yeah, you.
Where our problem is, and that's, I didn't expect it to come over at the wall. So I did not expect it to come over there. In fact, we tested the other side of the river, and that is really high. It's up about forty. So the treatment plant is definitely need over wash. And wash improvement was a long-term plan for me down the road to bring it up to where it should be pumping, because that water, one point five million gallons of water, is a lot of water to have in your pocket. And you want to make sure you don't lose that. So if you, you don't use it, eventually down the road, EPA looks at those wells and they say, oh, you're only taking four hundred, five hundred thousand gallons a day over there. And they, they want you to protect. The other thing I'm concerned about is fire protection, our emergency situation with water main break. We need the water to keep up with those peak demands. And the other problem we have is hydraulics, the system. If you take the water from one side of the town, try to get the other side of town, it overflows the Oxford tank. So that's why we need Kate Springs online. It's very important Kate Springs gets online by June first of next year. I'm going to have a very tough summer. I had a tough summer this year keeping up with demand. And this year also this fall, the water table is so low that we've had to reduce the pumping a lot of these wells to keep, to does get to the screens in the, in the wells. So that's a little bit about the water system. Any other questions? I'd gladly answer them.
Well, let's stay for a minute on the first I had heard that if we actually tapped into those wells and use them, we have to notify all town residents about what we're doing and list all these things out. That, that's a fairly serious step to have to take. And I think it's one we would rather not have to take.
I certainly don't want to go to that step. I'm quite familiar with other people in the area, and some of the towns have much more higher numbers than we have in PFAS. And there's going to be much more to treat that water than our water. And I've picked up samples in certain parts of the town, and I've just seen what the PFAS was in the town. And it's pretty well diluted. It's, it's below twenty. But you got to worry about the first customer. That's what you always get worried about, the first customer. Those people cannot get more than twenty pots.
Okay. Why? By, by what you're saying that from some of our local towns that might have some issues that are not currently addressing them now, come after January one, they're going to have to start applying their residents?
They're, at the January, they have, the town size of Mansville has to April first to sample. If they sample, they find it, then they'll be in the same boat we are now, but we're way ahead. If they sample, they find it, then they'll be in the same boat we are now, but we're way ahead of them. And the beauty about being ahead of them is that we can get the equipment needed. This is a nationwide throughout the country, these tanks are very hard to get. So if we can get the tanks for Kate Springs as soon as possible, we're way ahead of many other communities because a lot of towns, I know four or five good-sized towns in the local area, they haven't even tested yet. So, and I know towns in this area will have the problem. And they're just sitting back thinking.
Thinking at some point in the future, we're gonna have some of our neighbors and surrounding towns having to send out these notices and we won't. I know which position I'd.
That's correct. And I, I'll try very hard not to put those wells online, but if we have a major problem town, a fire or a uh, or something unforeseen comes through and destroys a treatment plant, we have to put online, I have to, then have to send out letters to everybody and tell them they've drinking water with PFAS in it, over twenty pots per trillion. I don't want to do that. I've been around there a long time, fifty-four years, I've done that in other communities and it wakes them up and they get very, very nervous, very nervous. And right now, it, I, I put on the website, I haven't got a call yet from anybody in town, uh, questioning what, what PFAS is or anything. And I think now that it's, now that the state has adopted that regulation for October second, you will start seeing it more and more in the paper for all the communities.
Any more questions, comments, Darren?
Um, I did have one question, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, I can.
Um, so just a, a question, I don't think I actually heard uh, discussed in any of the presentation. Um, ki- do you have any idea of where this contamination source came from? So I know that they're, we're finding this contamination now trickling through these various well systems, but I haven't heard where it's actually come from. And if we expect this to continue to have be an increasing contamination problem over time?
But I think I mentioned before, a, a lot of them was used in some uh, I believe some firefighting uh, products. Uh, it's mostly from industry. Uh, there are things that uh, you can try to do at some point in time to try to see if we can find the sources. Uh, and there's engineering companies, they'll be, they'll be glad to do that, but I think right now, we just find more, that first, we need to get it out of the system. I think there's ways, if we, if we, if we do some, uh, in the future, we can look at if there's ways to identify the sources, we may, we may be able to, I think similar to Superfund sites, to go after the, the generators. But I just think right now, uh, the, the putting money into something that may or may not get us anything uh, isn't, is not the best place to be putting it. I feel that putting it into protecting uh, our consumers is the best place for us to be investing the money.
Okay, it makes sense. Maybe the, the second follow-up question I had was um, being unfamiliar with the type of systems that would be used for remediation, I, I have a whole house filtration system in my house, but I, I don't, I, I don't understand the scale of what we're talking about that's costing, you know, obviously big price tags. So are, is there, are you suggesting that these new buildings, these, these systems are literally the size of buildings? These tanks and uh, the filter media? How big, can you give me a sense of scale of how big these systems are?
Uh, Evan, have you, have you, uh, have you been in, in any of the treatment plants?
Have we been in what?
In, in any of our water treatment plants?
I haven't, no.
Okay, because the, the vessels are similar sized to the vessels that we now have, we have at the uh, at the, at the treatment plants, we have vessels that are filled with what's referred to as green sand that treats with the iron manganese. There'll be similar vessels, but they'll have carbon which will remove the um, the PFAS. And uh, we've, we've already done, they've already, they started pilot testing at uh, Kate Springs because they have to do pilot testing to determine what the best solution is. They have to send it to the EP to review before you can even uh, start an actual design. And they've, they've recently started that also for, for Walsh well.
And that with this filter media, there's no, uh, is there a point in time in which it becomes saturated with the PFAS that it's collecting that has to be replaced?
Yes, ye- yes, yes, it will be. Uh, and I, I think we still, as far as exactly how long, uh, I think we'll let you begin, get more information. As far as the size, Kurt, do you have an idea what the height of those vessels are?
The answer to your question was, is that uh, the pilot study will return the size of the tanks, how many tanks you need. Um, the life in Mansfield will be much better than a lot of other communities for the, the carbon because the concentration is low, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, that's low. You're talking a neighbor in town here and they're talking seventy, eighty, a hundred. And that, that you need more tanks and the carbon doesn't last as long. So uh, it, but to, to remove it and dispose of it, it's very expensive, it is, it is expensive. But we have filters now, which we, we, we do every five or six years and that's expensive, so it's part of the operation of the water department. Uh, I look at it every, every, I have a, everything's on a computer, I look at the life of it and we, we replace them as they need it. In fact, if you look at, we're asking for seventy thousand dollars right now to do one of our tanks, uh, because they had a broken filter inside it and we had to throw the carbon away, we're replacing the carbon, so it costs about seventy thousand dollars a tank. Green sand, yeah, that's a green sand plant, that's right. But the uh, anyhow, uh, it, it, it's part of the operations, it's sell water, you're selling water, you're distributing to customers, you can't have a town man so if you don't have water. And, and the problem I get, I get really nervous because if I, if the town doesn't perceive this as fast as possible, it could, it could affect the ability to supply more water customers. We don't want to get to that point. Uh, we want to make sure we have our water. And also it was a little, in fact, we have wells down, it can affect your, your health, house insurance, fire insurance, because the pressure delivered water is all based on those numbers. Uh, I'm sure we've got a good, good idea where we're heading and I believe within two years, this, this will be all behind us. And we'll have much, much water system, uh, reliable water system, I should say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, Mike, I see you right there. Do you have question or comment?
Yeah, it's just a quick comment, um, mainly on uh, how we look at these things. And I really appreciate, you know, looking for the cheapest way to have the most minimal rate increase to the uh, rate payers, um, all the work that's gone into that. But, you know, it does, I think Brian was starting to touch on this, a bunch of minimal rate increases on taxes outside of the water department on water rates start to become significant to taxpayers and the residents. Uh, so I get you look at it as a one percent increase on the rate, but there is also the five percent increase coming, so it's really a six percent. And that we should really look at it in terms of that, in terms of all the costs and the extra increases across the board, across the town and their effects on the uh, taxpayers. Uh, that's basically it.
Are there any other members of CIP who have not had an opportunity and have a question or comment? Hearing none, uh, do we want to move on to the next uh, scheduled items, the uh, vehicles or prank, or is that how we're doing this?
I um, I, I think we, thanks Scott and uh, thanks everyone. Uh, Kevin has just informed me that we are not running up against any uh, any other meetings tonight, so we have all the, all the time in the world. Um, having said that, um, I asked, I would try to be efficient in our questioning. When we spend an hour and let's see, when uh, forty-five minutes on this topic, certainly more than reasonable for a fourteen million dollar project and although it took a while and there were a lot of questions, I think that doing this together, you know, had its benefits because the breadth of question really uh, interesting and everyone got, got to hear what the responses are and we all got to, you know, think about what we need to talk about in the future.
I think it added a level of efficiency to something of this size involving so many committees because otherwise you start stretching it out and meeting after meeting that it could have taken us a month to what we've done in a night.
You seen that, you know, nice segue there Scott. What I wanted to remind everyone is that we do have time scheduled on October fifteenth to follow up if any committee needs to take votes, et cetera. But the town meeting is scheduled for the seventh, you know, traditionally, the, the capital improvement planning committee makes their recommendation and then the other boards act on it. Although I don't know if that's set in stone, that's been the tradition. Um, and so over the, and I know the school committee has regularly scheduled meetings, I don't know when the um, when the uh, finance committee has their next scheduled meeting and I don't think uh, capital improvement has a scheduled meeting. So we have to get those meetings, uh, coordinate getting those meetings scheduled, so it's on our, our heads, the, the chairs to, to make sure that happens and, and Kevin will, will help with that. So having said that, let's go on to um, to uh, the third item, which is the uh, discussion of the DPW highway and water division CIP needs.
Uh, if you're with me for a second, I'm gonna try to get the PowerPoint back up and I'm flanked by Kurt Gaffney and uh, Mark Cook, uh, the operations managers, and I will do a quick presentation of vehicles and then I will let each one of them answer the questions for the individual vehicles. I will just, I will just do it, do the initial run through.
Thank you.
Lee, you know, before you actually start talking about all the individual vehicles, there's a common theme running through all of them and that's the ability to provide plowing, uh, and plowing capacity, which is not an insignificant issue. So I mean, as you look, uh, could you perhaps start off by just addressing that capacity because it's the theme that runs through each and every vehicle?
You know what, uh, that's a good point, so I will let Mark do an introduction on that before I even begin the PowerPoint.
Good evening. Um, so one of our problems that we've discussed um, several times, we were at the town uh, selectmen's meeting last fall was, we are having a problem getting contractors to snowplow. More and more contractors getting out. Um, a lot of our contractors that we've had uh, are reducing their fleets, they're buying brand new vehicles with the lower interest rates and they do not want to put the snowplows on these vehicles. Um, we need about fifty vehicles total to handle a decent snowstorm. A lot of the vehicles we're losing are the heavier vehicles. Um, we've looked at our fleet, we've looked at options, offering um, different incentives for snowplowers to come to Mansfield, we've looked at purchasing used vehicles. Uh, we went to Maine last uh, fall, uh, looked at several vehicles, it was just counterproductive, it would cost us a fortune to rehab older vehicles. Um, and it's, it's a major issue. If we had a problem this past winter, um, if we had a snowstorm, we would have been into some serious issues. And I think this winter, the way we're starting out, we've already had a reduction from one of our largest contractors of about a third of their vehicles. Um, we realized that about a month and a half ago. Um, and we're trying to plan accordingly, that's what this, this whole thing is about. Um, so we're looking at upgrading some vehicles that we do for replacement anyway and just into heavier vehicles um, to try to overcome that, so we can, we can service the town of Mansfield if we get a bad snowstorm.
Okay, and it sounds like a, a new problem for us. It's, it's not a problem we have had to deal with uh, in the past, it seems to have always been sufficient contractors.
We've had ups and downs with it. It's contractors, um, you know, years ago contractors would get laid off. Um, in the winter time, there'd be people around to do it. Um, a lot of winters recently, they've been working through. Um, and people are just not willing to put their trucks on. Um, so it's kind of been up and down, but not like it has recently.
Okay, thank you. Alright, Lee, if you want to just dive into the vehicle by vehicle?
BPW uh, vehicle CIP. I think echoing what uh, Mark was saying, we did a comprehensive review of the aging uh, vehicle fleet and we determined that seven vehicles need to be replaced. The average age of these vehicles is seventeen years old. All have outlived their useful lives or are now worth for investment. And as part of our analysis, we tried to keep in mind the overall needs of Department of Public Works, including the winter operations. Now, I think Mark can go into more detail, but I believe he, yesterday he had to take two of those vehicles out of service because of inspections. So the um, the fir- the first first vehicle is a one-ton Chevy four-by-four uh, truck with snowplow. Uh, this truck's used daily during normal operations as well as, as snow plowing operations and will replace a two thousand and five uh, truck. The new truck is an upgraded truck, is replacing a two-wheel drive, a half-ton. The urgent need for this truck is mainly focused on snow plowing due to the concerns we already mentioned. The upgrade will allow us to fill with an employee from another department and adds the town's plow fleet and makes us less dependent on the contractors. The, and the, the initial one is uh, proposed to be funded from the municipal financing. The second one is a one-ton Chevy four-by-four pickup with snowplow. This truck would be used during normal sewer operations as well as snow plowing operations, replace a two thousand and five Chevy C fifteen hundred. Uh, the truck again is an upgrade from a two-wheel uh, drive half-ton pickup. Again, the urgent need is for the plowing and the, the upgrade again would, would allow another vehicle, the town fleet. And um, this is, this is proposed to be um, purchased from sewer, because a- a- as you may or may not be aware, we do, uh, the highway division also maintains the sewer system and has uh, labors that, that are uh, that charge the sewer system, so so that, that's, that's why this is proposed uh, from the sewer.
Well, why uh, why the price difference between this one and the first one since they're both Chevy four-by-four as one-ton?
One is a dump truck and the other is a pickup truck.
Okay, pickup and dump, okay. The uh, but we lost your slideshow.
Okay. Come back?
Yep, got it.
Okay.
But next up, the big, bigger dump truck?
Yeah, ten-wheel dump truck. Uh, this truck will be used during normal operations by both highway and water division as well as.
We're still on the, we're still on the pickup. There we go.
Okay. Again, I'd like to note, the water division had a nineteen eighty-five international dump truck, its fleet that was taken out of service a few years back in auction due to excessive rust and rock repairs. The water division had budgeted uh, in its budget for the fall town meeting a hundred fifty thousand for a six-wheel dump truck. As part of the review, it was felt that the um, combining these and that and getting a ten-wheel, which is actually is, is, is uh, better for the water, they were just trying to keep.
Lee, Lee, you're one, you're talking about one slide ahead. You're talking about the three hundred thousand dollar truck that's gonna be fifty-fifty, this is, you're, you're the ninety-five thousand dollar one, the one before. The twenty-six thousand GBW?
I'm so, I'm sorry.
You have the ninety-five thousand dollar.
Somehow when I moved the computer, part of the screen is not showing on, on my screen. Uh, I'm sorry, twenty-six thousand GBW.
Okay, yeah, that's the slide that's up.
Yeah, this truck will be used during normal sewer operations by skilled labors funded to the sewer enterprise as well as snow plowing operations. Uh, very similar to the prior one. The new truck is an upgraded, this truck is replacing a four-wheel drive, one-and-a-half-ton dump truck with a plow. Uh, most recently due to its condition, age, it was utilized by a walk, uh, walkway crew and not used to plow roads as it was constantly breaking down. The urgent need for this truck is mainly focused on snow plowing due to our concerns about having inadequate fleet for snow removal operations. Uh, the upgrade will allow, allow another employee to be put out uh, plowing and make us less dependent on the plow contractors.
And this one was what, sewer retained earnings?
Then this is uh, ninety-five thousand dollars in sewer retained earnings. Okay. Lights, something happened here. When I move the computers.
Yeah, we're still on the twenty-sixth.
You can try unsharing and share that again, that could help.
You can try unsharing and sharing that again, that could help.
One second.
Nope, that's one back.
I'm going to have to close out the PowerPoint and bring it back.
Okay. May I think we all have your slides.
Can you see them now?
Nope. Can see you, but no slides.
Scott, I think you're right that we all have the slides. So Lee, if you want to go ahead.
If you want to just address them, Lee, we can, we can go with them. They were, they're all in the attachments. I think the next item up was the 10-wheel dump truck with plow.
How about now?
Ah, we, yeah.
All right, I need to, needed to go out and come back again. Fortunately, you have to scroll through.
There we go. There we are.
There we are. So again, this truck will be used in normal operations by both highway and water division as well as the snow plowing operations. Currently, the water division borrows a truck from the highway fleet or in wintertime, if one is not available to contract a rental with driver. I mean, it can happen anytime, but in the wintertime, the large trucks will have senders on them. So they can't be used as dump trucks. So if they have a water main break in the winter, when, when, when Mark has, has senders on his trucks, they have the, they have to hire a contractor and wait for him to come in. And again, as I mentioned before, they had a 1985 international dump truck, but there was, it was, had they taken out of service because of all the excessive rot, rust and rot. And the repairs exceeded the value of the truck at the time. The urgent need for this truck, for the water division is to have the truck available and for use during emergencies year-round. The urgent need for the highway division is mainly focused on snow plowing due to our concern about having the adequate fleet for snow removal operations. However, it will be used by both highway and water divisions during normal operations. And this will allow us to fill this truck with an employee during snow, normal operations and as the town's plow fleet makes us less dependent on contractors. The total cost is 300,000 split between highway, municipal and the water division. The water, as I mentioned before, they had 150,000 budgeted for the fall town meeting CIP for a six-wheel dump truck. This keeps them at the same cost, only we get the 10, the 10-wheel, which will benefit the town more footmark, more than the six-wheel would. Next one is just the, these were, these three trucks for the water division were actually on the CIP for the spring of the last spring town meeting and they were pulled out because of last year's shortfall in revenues and concerns of revenues for this year. But the need was there. There's a slight, there's a slight change and increase in cost because the curtain mark set down and looked at which vehicles would be best suited to help serve the town overall, not just for one purpose, but also to help out in other areas. So at this time, I will turn it over to Kurt and Mark for questions on each, in any of the vehicles.
Hey Scott, since you're there already, why don't you ask members of the CIPC who aren't on the select board, school committee or finance committee? If they have any questions.
Okay, yeah, let's start. Sharon, there you are, hands up.
Yeah, I always have a question.
Glad to hear.
What was that?
Glad to hear them.
So you're basically, I, I like the idea actually of bringing trucks into town with, with plows and all of that to help with the mitigating of the contracting issue. However, seven new trucks, when it takes 50 vehicles to do a storm, is that really going to be helpful? Because if I do, I don't, I keep through the math in my head, what's 50 minus seven plus another few vehicles you already have? I guess my, my question, I have two questions. One, is that enough and will it do the job? And secondly, I'm not sure who would answer this question is do we have in town significant budget shortfalls because of the result of COVID and the reduction of planned revenues and all of that? So those are my, my two questions and issues with that.
So I can take answer on the, the amount of vehicles. Seven, seven newer vehicles with plows or new vehicles with plows, it definitely helps us try to meet the, the service of the town. That's combining with vehicles we already have and the contractors we're anticipating. We could still be having a problem, but it's, it's, it's gonna, it should take us through this winter and several others.
You say, when you say a problem, I mean, it means that it might just take us longer to get done as opposed to we just can't get the vehicles of the contractors in.
It, it's already taken us significantly longer, just the last several years compared to towns around us. I mean, we, our roads are treated to a different standard than most of the towns anywhere as far as black pavement. However, our biggest problem is the contractors that we've lost. As I said earlier, the larger contractors, the larger equipment. We get up into subdivisions where we have 30 feet of pavement, 28 feet of pavement. We have small trucks. That's what we have, you know, the majority of our fleet are smaller vehicles. At the end of the storm, when we have to open these roads up and get back to curb so people can get mail, it's the larger trucks. That's why we're converting that six-wheeler. We just can't go out and we can't afford a fleet of $300,000 trucks. So that's why we're converting that one and, and stepping up on the others. But the, the answer is right now, the, the study that we did looking at our vehicles, these seven vehicles will be a big help. I mean, if we had a blizzard, we're going to be setback, but I think everyone will be.
Correct. Well, I always appreciate Mark when the payloader goes down my street. But, but I, I think in general, Mansfield has done a really good job with the, with their streets. And I know the subdivisions sometimes have to wait a bit longer, but I applaud you and your, your group for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Well, Mike, I see you there.
Yeah, I just have a question. The useful life estimates, basically when we, you know, built the new DPW garage to house all the vehicles, we were told it would expand the useful life of the vehicles and the estimates are the same age of the vehicles that they're replacing. So basically, we're replacing 10, 11-year-old vehicles with 10, 11-year-old vehicles. The, the estimated life for 10 to 11 years. So I just had a question on that, basically. Why it's the same useful life?
The useful life of a plow truck versus a non-plow truck?
Well, well, basic
I think we, we, we have a facility, we don't have, we can put our vehicles inside. The idea was our equipment should last longer, have fewer repairs. We should get more bang for our buck. So is that the case here?
That is the case. With the trucks that we're talking about replacing, I mean, the three underwater, I let Kurt speak to it, but I mean, if you look at the mileage, they've been inside since they were new.
They're still pretty good. It's starting to rust out though. I did a lot of work on them this last winter, had some bodywork done. But these, these three trucks are used by the station operators. We have three station operators that go to different treatment plants every day and they, they need a reliable truck to go there. And these trucks are not reliable anymore. The, the 2007 truck is a plow and we've had that for years. We use it for plow, Mark uses it for plow. And that, that's pretty well added.
Your question wasn't just on these. It was like a basically all of them, like, are we expecting to get perhaps a little more useful life than we had gotten in the past?
Yeah, because I was looking at the age of the, you know, the age of like the dump that we're replacing 25, 30 years old and our estimate on the useful life is, you know, 25, 30 years or 20 years, I think it was that, you know, I'm just curious, you know, what effect is it having basically on, you know, having the garage versus before and we didn't have it?
Those 2009 trucks that I have, those have been garaged in my garage since my building was built in 2005. And it's still good-looking trucks, but I just, they're not reliable for what I need them for. They break down, then I have a problem because we don't have spare vehicles. So, but, but they put a lot, I get right now, that number's wrong. They got about 112,000 miles in each one of those vehicles right now.
And you know, and maybe this might be a Mark question, but along those same lines, this is, you know, even if we're saying the useful life seems similar, is it going to be a less expensive useful life? I mean, are our maintenance costs going to go down or?
Yep, let's just talk about these three vehicles and waters to start. The replacement vehicles are going to be a plow vehicle. So is the useful life going to be longer? Probably not. Maybe the same, maybe less. That's what happens when we plow streets with salt all over them.
But it's about how long it lasts. How, how much money does it cost us to make it last that long? That's another factor.
I think that you're probably not going to spend that much more money on maintenance. I mean, we may have some plow maintenance out of snow and ice budget. That's where the, the maintenance comes from, the plow itself. There's a lot of wear on those, running a steel plow over asphalt road. The truck itself, I think would probably, is probably going to last the same. If anything, it would be just a tad less only because you're dealing with salts. I mean, the, the worst time for trucks to be driving on the road is when we're treating them.
Well, we also have the ability to get these things in and service them and to try to deal with the salt and to try to get them cleaned up. But we have a a very large expensive facility with a lot of capabilities. Hopefully that would add to the life of the vehicles or, or make the maintenance of those vehicles perhaps less expensive in the long run, especially at the end of life when we're typically paying a lot to keep something on the road.
The facility is allowing us to do maintenance that we've never been able to do before. At Kurt's facility, we washed the vehicles, we can dissolve the salts off of them. They're stored inside, they get a lot better care in the new facility. That's, that's a huge thing. It's going to impact all our, all our fleet vehicles. It's these particular vehicles, these three are being upgraded to do something that they weren't originally doing. Replacement vehicles and going back over to the vehicles from the, on the sewer and the highway side. It's basically the same thing. I mean, they're, they're out at the worst possible time. But the facility is definitely, hands down, I mean, it's, it's increasing the, the life expectancy of the vehicles. Again, I, as I've always said, vehicles aren't made today like they were on some of these vehicles that we're replacing. Quite honestly, I'm sure you guys have seen that in your own vehicles.
I am not, can't see anyone's hands raised here. Do we have questions from other CIP members?
No questions for me.
Not hearing anything, Frank. I will turn it back to you.
Hey, thanks Scott. Thanks, everyone. Can we get the select board back on? And let's start with Mr. Schoenfeld.
Thank you, Frank. One question, I think it might be for Barry. I think it might be for Kevin. I think we need to have some type of analysis to demonstrate that bringing all this plowing in-house is the right cost benefit approach. You buy a $300,000 truck. I know it has multiple purposes. It's not just for plowing. Or, you know, find some allocation of cost for that truck for plowing, find the allocation of costs for the employee for running the truck, whether it be regular time or overtime. And just some type of model that says, hey, what we're deciding to do here to really bring our fleet of, of first responders, let's say for snow purposes in-house, more so than out of the shop, out of the house is the right call. That's it. And hopefully I think you're right there. Mark, I think you're exactly right. We just need to put the numbers to a, to a spreadsheet. Let, you know, that's what you'd expect to hear from me anyway, right?
I, I like the hard questions. I don't, just to clarify, we're, we're not intentionally trying to bring the plowing fleet into just town vehicles and not hire contractors. Contractors are definitely the way to go. We don't own the maintenance. We own an hourly rate. They're only here for the snowstorm. The, our problem is we can't draw them here. There's less and less people interested in doing the work. And, and I'll be quite honest with you, one of the biggest problems we have is everyone wants to get paid what we pay per hour. No one wants to provide workman's comp insurance. And no one wants to, to require or provide the amount of liability insurance that we have to have to protect the town of Mansfield. And we are no different than all the other towns. It's just people don't like to travel. I mean, we have people coming from New Bedford plowing for us right now, driving.
They're not, they're not enough off-season landscapers around to do all the plowing that we need, for sure.
Most of the contractors want to be in, in, there's a large contractor Route 106 in Mansfield. I won't mention his name. He plows half of the industrial park. There's so much more money in taking care of the parking lots and walkways because they're getting paid per inch. We're paying, but paying per hour.
Understood.
They're not here. And a lot of contractors are going to the state.
I did see the, I did see the rate schedule in the Sun Chronicle last week, I think it was. Asking people to sign up, asking plowers to sign up. No, I think it's good analysis. I do want to, you know, we promised the public that the building of the DPW garage would lengthen the life of our, of our trucks. And we need to maintain that cost benefit. I realized that we did switch from one particular truck to another. So 11 years on the old truck might be the same 11 years on this truck, whatever the number may be, but you know, clearly demonstrate that yes, we are taking care of these vehicles and it's, we're going to make a major investment this year. Let's make sure that those stick with us for a long time. But no, good analysis, good work. I just like to use pricing models as most, as best, as often as I can, so.
There are some moving targets with this is, I mean, if you just look at our salt uses last year versus a really bad winter. I mean, the more salt we put out, the more our trucks are getting hammered. Your vehicles are getting personally, I, I mean.
One last question, Mark. How would you define our snowplow model? Are we employees first, contractors first? Or is it a mishmash of everything in between?
So as far as a snowstorm, it's all hands on deck. Everything goes out. There's, there's no, if, if I understand the question correctly.
If it's a mild three-inch storm, no ice involved, we're going to do almost 80% of our own staff, our own trucks. If it's
You would, you would think that from, from a business standpoint and from a, from a budget standpoint, you would think that, that the town of Mansfield, the best interest would be to use our employees with our equipment that we already own. However, one of the things years ago that we went through, 25, 30 years ago, was Mansfield, we had all the contractors and they left us because back then, the mindset around town was we have to save every penny we can. This is about the dollar. And what happened was is Mansfield had our contractors home. Because we were going to do it by ourselves. We were going to save money. It would take a little bit longer, but it was about saving the money. And all our contractors went away because they're, they're living in all other towns, the majority of them still do. And, and the contractors in other towns are out plowing.
Yep.
So last year, when we attempted to try to stay with other towns, we, we worked out a, a tech routine between Norton, Mansfield, Foxborough and Eastern. We were all trying to do the same thing. And then all of a sudden Fox will be like, oh, we've got to send our contractors out. Eastern wants to send them out because Fox will send them out. And where's that leave us? I mean, from a standpoint of money, you'd say, let's not call them. Because once we make the phone call, we're, you know, we're committing to like 20 grand the minute we make a phone call. And if we leave the contractors home, we lose them.
We lose them, right. So, so that's not the model. It, it's definitely not our employees, our trucks first. So I guess if you could define the model sometime for our next meeting, so it'd be good understanding of how valuable having all these plow plow trucks is for the, for the, the enterprise here, for the snow enterprise here. That would be very helpful because then people understand we're doing what we can to maintain both the modest amounts of snow, you know, removal and then so we don't kill ourselves on the major snow removal. And we, we really need those contractors too. So yeah, it's, it's nice to hear the philosophy and how it's evolved over Yeah, it's, it's nice to hear the philosophy and how it's evolved over time and how it is trying to find the most cost-effective way. But just to describe this to residents, which you'll have to do, you'll have to come up with, here's our model for snow plowing, a four-inch, an eight-inch, a glorious three-foot that, you know, without snow days now, we can't enjoy anyway. So, um. All right.
Thirteen or fourteen years ago, I put in a request for a hundred and fifty thousand to buy a sidewalk snow blower. The capital improvements committee laughed me out of the room. A hundred and fifty thousand dollar snow blower for clearance, snow off of sidewalks. And it, several years in a row, I put that request in and they always said the same thing. And then I told them, I said, you know, one of these years, we're not going to be able to open the schools because sidewalks are going to be plowed in and I can't move the snow. And the year it happened, um, I got myself invited into a meeting in the back room here at Town Hall. It wasn't very comfortable for me and a few other people. Um, and the funny thing was, is I, I distinctly remember it was on a Tuesday. And Thursday night, there was a CIP meeting and then Friday I was told, here's a hundred and fifty thousand, go buy the equipment. And then magically, I guess everyone thought that this, someone has a lot with these vehicles packed like that, but.
Right, right.
It got the message real fast when all of the residents called the Board of Selectment and School Committee and said, we're not, we're tired of having Mansfield sidewalks plowed in and everyone else is open, so.
And that's not, yeah, that's not the way we, that's not the way we roll anymore. So, Mark, I appreciate that, that story. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Any more questions, gentlemen? Uh, thorough but efficient, please. Mr. Aptwits.
Just one question. If we, if Mark, if we did not buy this three hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment, what, what would that do? Would that would just take us longer to, to take, so if a storm took us six hours, well now that would take us what?
I, I, I couldn't even put hours on it, uh, only be, it's one vehicle. Is it going to make or break us? No. The one thing that you need to know about this vehicle is we're not really expecting it for this winter. Those vehicles, ten-wheelers, it's, takes weeks to get the truck, never mind build it. It's probably going to be something that at best, we may see the end of the winter. We're trying to prepare for worst case. This, the study we've done and losing contractors, it's been in the newspaper. Um, the state last year, there was a big, last winter, there was a big thing about it. They were having problems drawing contractors. We're trying to plan ahead, much like Kurt and Lee and, and our manager and our manager doing with the water system. We're just planning that this, this is the trend of losing vehicles.
All right. Thanks, Mark. That's it. Thanks, Frank.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan.
Um, I think all the questions have been asked, at least as far as I'm concerned. However, I am pondering a, a career change, learning how to drive a plow maybe. So I'll be contacting you, Mark.
No problem. Just note that the drivers usually only make about twenty-five, thirty dollars an hour. The rest is going to the truck owner.
I'll be a truck owner.
Mr. Trowbridge.
I've seen Neil drive, so I'll make sure I stay home those days. Um, no, I, I just wanted to be sure that I'm, I'm understanding this. We, we need this equipment also because we're trying to fill a void because we have contractors not coming in. We're not looking to try to bring this in-house. This is a necessity. We're filling a void. Is that correct? Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right. That leaves me just very quickly. I don't know if this is you, Mark, or, or Kevin. I know that there were the three pickups that were originally requested in, in, um, in the spring. Uh, and I, my understanding was that most, if not all, these other trucks also were sort of requested in the spring, but these have been upgraded with plows, et cetera. Oh, pretty much so. So it's not seven new trucks. It's.
It's, this, out of the seven vehicles, there's only one truck that's actually new to the fleet. Everything else is replacing vehicles. The newest truck or the only new truck here is the ten-wheeler. And it really, it new compared to what we had last year, but it's replacing a truck the water got rid of some years back. It was a, was a nineteen eighty-five.
Okay, so, so there was some creative thinking here about the trucks we're, we're requesting. Let's see what we can do to make them, you know, optimal for the, for the town. Okay, thank you. Um, guys, you can take a break. Let's ask the school committee what they think about this.
We have no questions at this time.
Okay, then. Brian, you're on.
Um, I'll pull the FinCom. Scott's already asked. I know Kathy had a, to drop. I don't have any questions, but Sarah.
Sarah.
Do you have any questions?
No, I.
Oh, good point. Um. Mike, do you have questions?
I just have a quick question. Um, just from a financial head respect. Uh, looking at this, either under a leasing type structure or a sale back, lease sale back, someone else can use. I, I mean, I don't, it would be a Barry question and Kevin. You know, does appreciation can go to someone else? Does it make sense to lease or do a sale lease types of deals for debt purposes? Hello?
The answer I'm being told is no. It makes no sense to lease these.
Why is that?
Standby.
Sure. The, um, the model that we have, Mike, is to, uh, pay off these vehicles in five years. So usually that's, um, generating less interest than what the lease would require. So again, with, with these vehicles being, uh, funded with this ban, the general government will be paying, uh, the trucks off in five years and the same thing with the water department.
So you, are you saying that the vehicles can't be leased longer than five years? Is that what you're telling me?
Sorry.
You're saying the vehicles can't be leased longer than five years? Now you can't go out to a leasing company and say, I want to lease these vehicles for eight or nine years?
You could. Uh, I, I'm sure there are leasing companies that would go longer than five years. The, the. The issue is that obviously the longer you go, the more interest you pay. So we thought that paying these things, paying these, uh, vehicles off in five years made the most sense.
Okay, well, again, we're dealing with an inverted rate curve right now. That's why. Okay. Well, if you looked at the analysis, fine. It's just a question. I, I, I just don't understand why it has to be five years. But, okay.
Alter.
I'm all set. Thanks.
Jack.
Yeah, just a quick question. I understand that six of the seven vehicles are replacements, but how often, Mark, do we do this analysis? Uh, do we do it every year, every two or three years or how frequently?
We look at our fleets every year. Uh, every time CIP comes up, we, we have to have a plan. Our plan is typically a five. We like to run a six-year plan to kind of be ahead of the town manager. Uh, it's hard.
Usual to replace vehicles in one year? Is it uncommon?
Is it what?
Is it uncommon to place seven vehicles in one year?
I haven't seen it.
Not between, not between the two divisions. No.
Okay, thank you.
Three, yeah, three divisions, sir.
I, I had no questions at this time, so. Thanks for the presentation. I think you covered most of the stuff that we had concerns with. So Frank, back to you.
Thank you, uh, Brian, and I think at this point, Scott, because, um, you called your meeting to order. If you, if you want to adjourn, everyone's certainly welcome to stay around, but I don't think you're, you're involved in the next.
Let's, uh, before we do, what are we going to need CIP to actually do? Uh, before a town meeting, as we were going to have to vote, we're going to have to make a recommendation to FinCom and to the select board. So, uh, how do we want to work the timing on that?
I will go to my, uh, scheduling expert, Kevin, Barry.
Yeah, thanks, Frank.
Fifteenth date open, but.
Frank, what, what I would suggest is to be able to make sure that we could go through and have an actual meeting of the CIP for ten fifteen, which is going to be, I mentioned, uh, a couple of hours ago. Like, we know it's gone by fast tonight. Um, but it, it would be most advantageous for us to be able to have CIP as part of our consensus meeting on the fifteenth. Okay, so everyone is all together.
And in which case, should we probably start off with CIP so we can make our recommendation before the other groups are sort of having the consensus meeting?
Sure. And it can actually start at, uh, maybe like fifteen minutes before the regular consensus meeting.
Yeah, is that me? I, I think if we were going according to, uh, form, that we need that recommendation. So that would work, that would work for me.
So Scott, we'll work with you in sending something up together with Nancy and Carrie from our office.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Scott. If you want to do the honors of the roll call for adjourned.
Uh, I will, uh, let's see. Well, I don't see any members there. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, there's Mike.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, Mr.?
Hi.
Frank?
Yes.
Sarah, you still with us?
Yes, and yes.
Evan?
Yes, yep.
Mike, other Mike? Uh, we, do we have Sarah and Scott? Yes, I think, uh, CIP is adjourned.
Oh, Kara, I say yes. And Lauren, Lauren also.
Still there, yep.
And Sharon, yes.
Okay. And is everyone good for what we scheduled as far as meeting, uh, maybe a few minutes earlier on the fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good night.
All right. Thank you, Scott.
My pleasure.
Kevin, item four, discussion of appropriation recommendations for the consensus meeting. Hi, Barry.
Hi, Frank. How are you?
Been a while.
All right. So, uh, can you all see the screen? Um, that starts off with a special fall town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, great. So what we're here to talk about tonight on this are the available appropriations and what to do with them at Fall Town Meeting. So the first, um, line is the additional state aid that we have, um, received from a commitment from the Commonwealth. Uh, as you recall, during our consensus meeting, we agreed as a consensus to reduce state aid by about ten percent. And at that time, we didn't know what the cherry sheet or the Commonwealth was going to provide for chapter seventy and unrestricted local aid. Since that time, the state has committed to two things, uh, actually three things. One, they've committed to level funding chapter seventy from FY twenty levels. Two, they've, uh, agreed and, uh, promised to fund unrestricted local aid to FY twenty levels. And three, they've agreed to, um, hold certain assessments that are also on the cherry sheet. So we know those three things, even though the Commonwealth has not finalized its entire budget, they have committed to those three items. When you plug in those three items to what the consensus meeting agreed to on May fourteenth, it results in a one point nine five five million dollar available cash, available funding to reappropriate, um, at the Fall Town Meeting. So that's where that one point nine five five comes from. Um, it will be our recommendation, and we hope that the consensus group agrees to, um, allocate that to the FinCom Reserve Fund. Uh, by doing that, uh, it certainly provides the town the flexibility it needs uh, between whenever that appropriation takes place to the end of the fiscal year, in the event that any of that cash is needed. The second, uh, piece of this is that by the time we reach, uh, annual town meeting, hopefully in May, uh, again, with the consensus group agreeing, it would be our, um, recommendation to allocate some of that or all of that to the stabilization fund. As you recall, we, um, appropriated the one point five million dollars from the stabilization fund to, uh, uh, balance the FY twenty-one budget. So that would be the, sort of the two-step process, and that would be our recommendation. The other items on that same screen, you'll see, uh, the amount that have been certified by the state. Uh, the FY twenty free cash has been certified at one point three nine one million. Sewer Enterprise retained earnings certified at one point four six million. Water retained earnings, two hundred and five thousand dollars and parking, a hundred and one thousand dollars. Those are, those are also have all been certified. So if I could just move on to the next screen. Insofar as the free cash is concerned, uh, we do have an expectation that at Fall Town Meeting, we will be asking for the following appropriations. Um, we are going to suggest that we pay down half of the Plymouth Street Fire Station improvements ban or borrowing. Pay down half of the tower truck improvements of a hundred thousand dollars. We want to get back on track with funding the assessors, uh, five-year revale and ten-year tape measure for seventy thousand dollars. Um, we have, uh, to consider funding a compensated absences fund of a hundred thousand dollars for, uh, retirements and so forth. And then, uh, we also would like to, uh, recommend that we, um, uh, switch over a, an expense that was carried in the FY twenty-one parking enterprise, uh, fund and switch that over to general government. The, as you can imagine, the parking enterprise fund, as built and approved for FY twenty-one, um, is not sustainable. The revenues simply are not there. No one's, very few people are parking at the parking lots and taking tea. And I think there were eighty cars there today. Uh, so the revenue is not coming in, and I, I don't think that surprises anybody. The, um, so the need is to go through that budget, um, and, um, make appropriate cuts to that budget for, uh, reapproval, if you will, at Fall Town Meeting. And part of that process would be to switch over one of the expenses that's carried in that budget, uh, which is the assessment for, um, the transportation-related, uh, assessment. Put that back over into general government and pay for it using the two hundred thousand dollars from free cash. Uh, we believe that with appropriate cuts and, and swapping over this assessment back to general fund, we will bring that, um, parking, uh, enterprise, uh, budget back into balance. So, um, the net result, if these recommendations are approved, would be to place about two point seven million dollars into the FinCom Reserve uh, at town meeting. And again, that would be available for any lawful purpose between that date and June thirtieth. And we believe that provides the town with the most flexibility during these uncertain times. Uh, and, you know, and obviously includes school so that, um, by, uh, the May town, the May annual meeting, uh, whatever is remaining in that FinCom Reserve, we can then have another consensus meeting to talk about, um, how much, if any, you would prefer to put over to the, um, stabilization fund. So, oops. So that is, um, the recommendation for free cash. Insofar as the sewer enterprise, uh, fund retained earnings. Our recommendation is to take the one point four six million dollars. As you heard previously, there, there are two, uh, vehicles that we would like to fund from sewer retained earnings. They're shown there in red. And that would leave about one point two million dollars remaining in certified retained earnings that we would like to place into the sewer reserve fund again, so that going forward, access to that money is available through the FinCom, uh, in the event it's needed. And that is the same, uh, recommendation for the water enterprise fund, uh, and as I mentioned, the parking enterprise fund, to put those retained earnings amount into those respective reserve funds. So those are our recommendation for Fall Town Meeting.
Uh, thank you, Barry. Here I am. Uh, thank you. Um, let's go to questions, uh, from the, uh, from the FinCom, uh, recalling that, um, that, um, we're going to be meeting again on the fifteenth to finalize this. Brian, I'm, you've already discussed some of, at least part of this. Brian, I'm, you've already discussed some of, at least part of this concept at your last meeting.
Yeah, I, I was not at that meeting, so Barry, my apologies if you're repeating something. Previous to the last FinCom meeting, in conversations I had a few, and with Kevin, my understanding was that the additional funds from the state was going to be split to some degree between FinCom Reserve and into stabilization. That it was going to look good for the conversation that's gonna be, and it continued to live up to the memorandum of understanding. So it wasn't going to be a wait. It was, we're going to divvy it up, so some into FinCom and others elsewhere. Between then and the last FinCom meeting, all of a sudden, there's this change that everything's going into FinCom Reserve. So I'm just wondering if, and again, apologies if you explain this, but why the switch to now putting everything into FinCom Reserve right up front?
Good, good question. So we thought, Brian, that putting everything into the FinCom Reserve would provide the town with the most flexibility, town and school with the most flexibility. If we, and again, in the two-step process I talked about a moment ago, if in May there's available money in the FinCom Reserve and the consensus group then agrees, we would then recommend that at least returning the one point five million dollars to the stabilization. If we instead went right to stabilization with the one point five million dollars on November seventh, that one point five million dollars or that stabilization money is inaccessible without another town meeting. And so we thought that that would take away flexibility between now and next year. So that's, that's the thought process. Still, ultimately, goal is to put the one point five million dollars back into stabilization. Absolutely true. We decided on the two-step process because that provides the town and the school with the most flexibility between now and annual town meeting.
And you know, at our, our last meeting, Brian, when, when we did discuss that, it was, we, we brought up the point that the whole idea of where the money was going to get repatriated to really originated, you know, with FinCom. So we're firmly on board with where we'd like to see the money, but we discussed the flexibility issue. And given the uncertainty that we have between now and what's going to happen in the spring, having that flexibility seemed to be reasonable, and we didn't have any fears that the, the FinCom would be too eager to spend it in a hurry.
No, I agree. One of the things that, and maybe this contributes to, and no way did I think that one point five was going to be put immediately into stabilization. I thought it was going to be a, a split, whether it's down the middle or not, I'm unclear. I would love to hear what Cara and Lynn in the school committee, if they feel that they benefit from that flexibility, if they feel they're in good financial shape, or, or if they have an opinion on this thing, and, you know, if they could weigh in a little bit on this discussion. So I don't, if they could just interject, and, and I know we're kind of jumping around, but I'd be curious as to their viewpoint on this particular piece of the puzzle.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. So I'll kind of jump in right here since you've asked, asked for our opinion on this. So, you know, obviously, we're going into this, I mean, we have readjusted our budgets, but we, you know, the schools are obviously probably the ones greatest impacted by everything going on, and expenses are, are increasing. I mean, we've, there's certainly, there's areas that we are still unknown about. So I think having this flexibility is just going to be critical to the schools as we go through this year.
So Cara, you think you might end up having to come to FinCom before May town meeting for additional funding?
It's, it's always, it's a possibility. I mean, I can't say right now, we're kind of going through it, and we're, we hope not to, but you know, we, we I just saw, you know, it's, it's unsure this year.
And Brian, if I could just add into this, and Cara, well, we haven't talked directly about this at my bi-weekly meetings with Teresa that I have with, with she and the HR Director. She had expressed the concern that if something came up, we wanted to make sure that we were going to be in the best position to be able to aid you immediately. And that was one of the other things that we wanted to be able to make sure that we could one hundred percent be able to provide between now and May.
That's great. We really appreciate that.
One of the related questions I have, and I know I want to get to my FinCom compatriots, is we still have CARES Mac, CARES Act money and FEMA money. Kevin, can you remind us in terms of, I know you've applied to FEMA, we've heard, and they're very slow, and then you have to apply to state. How much money do we expect still to come that hasn't hit our books yet, that you're kind of waiting on somebody to determine? And does that just drop into free cash, or does that go back into our funding, into the general fund?
Barry, if you want to be able to speak specifically to the amount that we were carrying as our total amount of allocation, because the schools have a million dollars if they're own through their appropriations, through their grants, and then the town has the two point one, and after all of our allocated projects thus far between town and school, we're at
So we're probably at one point five to one point six million dollars with projects that A, already have been paid for, and B, projects that are in the process of being paid for, that we, that we've received sort of the green light from our own audit firm and from the state. So where, as you, as you talked about before, Brian, we are constantly trying to find opportunities to use this CARES Fund money appropriately. And it's not an easy task all the time, but in working with the schools and working with the other departments, we're, we're slowly chiseling away at that, of, of those funds.
And can you just remind us, so when it comes in from the state, so or FEMA says, here's your piece of it, we're not going to, we'll get the twelve, you get seventy-five percent, so we have to go get twenty-five percent from the state from the CARES Act, because we draw from the two separate, where does that money go once the state says, okay, here's your, your dollars? Where does that drop into?
Matt, you want to answer that? I'll have the town accountant answer that specific question.
I'm sorry, I missed a little bit. Do you mind just repeating that question?
When we get reimbursed from either FEMA or the state for CARES Act, so the two buckets, where does that money drop to?
Okay, so they're both, they're both federal money, and they both go into federal grant funds. The CARES Act money, we have all that money already. The two point one million dollars, we applied for in round one and received the full two point one million. The FEMA money, that's a different story. We don't know when that could show up. And I think that, you know, as mentioned before, we received money last year for a snowstorm that had occurred two years ago. So
No, I, so, so Matt, let me give you an example, then maybe you can explain this, because this goes into how much money do we have coming back to us on top of this? So if there's a, and I'm going to use big number, a one million dollar expense related to CARES Act, the COVID, we applied to FEMA, FEMA says, sure, we'll pay seven hundred and fifty thousand of that, that's the seventy-five percent. CARES Act, we can draw down the other two fifty. Where does that money just come? Because we've already paid it out. We had to pay out the expense upfront, we had to pay it out. Now we're getting reimbursed. Does that just go back into operating, or where does that money go? Once we get it from FEMA and from
What will happen now is typically with things, you know, going back to like snowstorm type of situation, we'll apply for that money through FEMA, it'll come in a couple of years later, and that money does typically go to the general fund. In this case, we were instructed by the state to set up two federal grant funds, one for CARES and one for FEMA. So they're looking at, they're in two separate funds, but the way they're looking at them for, for state balance sheet purposes, they're looking at the net between the two. So the FEMA one is in a deficit right now, but we got the two point one million dollars sitting in the CARES Fund offsetting that deficit. At some point, when the money comes in from FEMA, the FEMA money will offset the deficit in the FEMA Fund, while the CARES Act will kind of start taking over and, and acting as its own fund as well. So, none of that money will go to the general fund, the way it has in the past with, like, say, a snowstorm. Any of the CARES money that's unexpended
Hold on a sec, Scott, Scott, just wait, let, let Matt just finish up his, his point. Hold on, Scott. Go ahead, Matt.
So any money of, any of the CARES money that, that is unexpended has to be returned.
Yeah. So, so basically, it's not how much money we're going to get. We already have all the money we're ever going to get. It's how much do we have to give back is the only question. And it may take us two years to answer that till FEMA tells us anything.
No, I understood.
That, the FEMA is the big wild card. And that, that's what makes this, you know, difficult, because, I mean, in theory, you know, we, yes, we qualified for two point one million for CARES, but we could spend in excess of that, you know, because we, we are getting money from FEMA as well, but we don't know what they're going to reimburse. And that, and, and every community is going through this right now. The CARES money has to be spent by December thirtieth, right? But yet, we don't know what FEMA is actually going to reimburse us till nose it. So it, it's, it's uncomfortable position we're in, where the state's telling us, yeah, any unspent CARES money has to be sent back as of December thirtieth. But yet, the CARES Act is supposed to be the, the safety net for what FEMA doesn't cover, and we don't know what FEMA is even going to cover. I think we were one of the first towns to apply for FEMA reimbursement back in June. I, I, a lot of towns that I speak with haven't, haven't even applied for FEMA reimbursement yet. So being one of the earlier towns to apply for FEMA reimbursement, and we still haven't heard anything from them, you know, it's hard to kind of figure out this situation and figure out where we're going to actually stand as of December thirtieth. My suggestion would be to not exceed the two point one million, because if we do, you know, again, we don't really know what FEMA is going to actually reimburse us for. I mean, it's going to probably be something, but we don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we go way over, and then FEMA says, no, we're not going to reimburse this, 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 and this, and now where else?
No, I, I get that, and I know Congress is looking at extension beyond the December thirty-first deadline. I've looked over the paperwork, and, and this is a separate discussion. I just wanted to see that piece of it related to also bear all this additional funding, and whether it still makes sense to, to at least start putting in the stabilization. But I, I want to move on to the rest of FinCom to ask their question. So Scott, since you're up on the screen, you get
Oh, yeah, it's a simple one. I mean, as long as we don't spend more than two point one million, there's never any issue. It, it'd only be how much money do we have to give back? That, that's my big question. The rest of it is a gamble. Well, what do we hear from FEMA, whatever we hear from them, who knows?
Correct, and FEMA actually just came out with new guidelines where now they're saying, they originally said that they were going to cover all PPE, and now they're, you know, and they're saying, well, actually, we're only going to cover the PPE for first responders. So the seventy-five percent that we assumed FEMA was going to cover for all the school PPE and everything, now they're backtracking and saying, well, actually, we're not going to cover that. So again, that was assumed FEMA reimbursement, but now, now we're not getting it. So now that goes a hundred percent to CARES. So this, that's just going to show you, you know, dealing with FEMA is not easy.
No, no, no doubt about it. Walt, to you?
Yeah, I, I think that what Kevin, and, and I assume the board of selectmen support, it leaves flexibility by moving it into the, into the reserve fund, to FinCom Fund, and, and I think that any flexibility in case, you know, we have nothing in writing, everything's been verbal from the state. So, you know, I, I would support that.
Sarah?
Yeah, just to reiterate comments from our last FinCom meeting, I, I support this. I just want a transparent process around it so that we're in that whatever we're pulling out of the reserve fund, it follows the process we laid out at town meeting. Um, I would also encourage the schools to come forward whenever they feel that they need a funding to maintain the rest of their operations, knowing that they, they don't have any idea of that. And my second one is just a question that does not need to be asked right now, maybe for the next meeting, is I'm just curious about the sewer's profitability, and why it seems, at least from a numbers perspective, it made so much money. I'd just like a little bit more information about that, but it doesn't need to be answered now. Thank you.
Zach?
Yeah, just a quick one. Again, this is probably an unknown, but we talked about having to spend it by December thirty-first, but, you know, it looks like COVID's going to go on, who knows long? Do we know any word on, you know, after January first, how much potential funding will be available to another CARES Act, or is that an unknown?
Jack, we're not going to have that answer unfortunately until Congress decides to make a change. If Congress makes a change, then we have a shot. If Congress doesn't take action to change it, then the answer will be no.
Keep your fingers crossed. Maybe, Mike, they're having discussions.
Thank you.
And there is, a- as an FY, there is commentary circulating already to extend the date. So I'm kind of going to see if there's movement. Mike?
Uh, no, I just should reiterate, reiterate, it does offer the most flexibility, so I'm in favor and supportive as well.
Okay, um, that's Scott, go Walter. I, I know that Kathy had a drop off. I think that is everybody from FinCom. So Walt, um, Frank, back to you.
Thanks, Brian. Cara, any more questions from the school committee or statements or words of wisdom?
Um, let me just quick check here. All right, I'd say school committee, if anybody has any questions, kind of jump on camera and ask. I don't have any, this is Lauren. I don't have any questions, just wanted to reiterate that, that flexibility is just critical. We just, like, we, you don't know what you don't know, you don't know what you're going to face. So, um, I think this is a really good option for us.
Yeah, I'm just going to echo that also. I think it's the, it's the unknown about the December thirty-first cutoff for the funding, and, you know, specifically what the funding can get used for and not used for, and then having the flexibility to get it for the rest of the school year. And I think what also is, you know, unfortunately, starting to loom for us is the FY twenty-two, you know, budget development process and how we're going to move forward with that. So I think that that is probably a topic for another consensus meeting. So just to have that on everybody's radar.
Okay, thank you. Select board, gentlemen, where are you?
Hey Frank.
There we go. Mike, questions, comments?
No, I mean, I think what we have set up kind of gives us the best flexibility. I think we're in actually pretty good shape. We don't, there's a lot of unknowns though still. So, I mean, this, this provides us that, that safety net. You know, it's a lot of money sitting there, and, you know, hopefully, there'll be a lot of money left over, and we'll be able to put it back into stabilization.
You, Steve?
Yeah, I think the flexibility is good. I mean, that's a lot of money for FinCom to, to potentially allocate, but I think it's not us that you have to convince. It's town meeting that you have to convince that the two point one million will be appropriately used going forward. And, you know, I encourage you to come up with a list of, of items that would be reasonable, or items they would expect to see. I mean, that is more than two percent of our budget now in a flexible FinCom Reserve. And while we do have faith in FinCom to use it appropriately, I think having some guidelines in place, like others have mentioned, to present the town meetings that will be followed, and, you know, the transparent approach as we've been having with our MOU and other things, makes a lot of sense. You know, what's been bumming me out for the last month is our pension obligations, because I thought we'd have some flexibility in just a few years, but so I've yet to recover from that depression, I guess, of how our pension obligations, now we're going to take another fifteen years or so, right? But anyway, nice work. Thank you very much.
Mr. Afterwards?
I'll say.
Yes. Okay, I just wanted to say that, yes, this does provide flexibility, which we need right now. We, we have uncertainty. So we, we will have some difficulty in saying exactly what we're going to spend this money on. If we knew what we were going to spend the money on, we wouldn't be taking this route. I haven't traditionally, I have traditionally been in favor of increasing what used to be very small FinCom reserves, and we've done that over the years, not because of me, but because of, of like minds, thinking that this is much larger than we typically have, but it's within the limits of the state law. You know, if we need something, we have to request it from the FinCom. If the school board needs something, committee needs something, they have to request it, and the FinCom have to approve it. So there is checks and balances here. So I think it's a, an elegant solution. This is actually the first time we've had not, we were aware of it recently, but this is the first time we had an opportunity to discuss it. And I thank the other boards for, for discussing it so eloquently and helping us come to a quick decision here. So I think that is it on this topic. If we're going to meet again on the fifteenth, Kevin, or do we want to entertain?
Sorry.
Do we want to, um, do we want to entertain motions on? Do we want to, um, do we want to entertain, um, motions on this or do should we just wait for the next consensus meeting? So everyone has a chance.
October 15th.
I think that makes sense too. Thanks very much. Okay, at this point, uh, Kara, do you want to adjourn your meeting?
Yes, um, I look for a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Lynn?
Aye.
Lauren?
Aye.
Jenny, you still won? And I know we had lost Linda. So I, a motion passes 3-0. We are adjourned.
Okay.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you. Uh, Brian took fast.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move readjourn. Second? Second?
Scott, how do you vote?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Kathy's absent. Sarah?
Yes.
Zach?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Hi, 6-0. Thank you, everyone. Frank?
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay. Item five is residents' questions and comments. I have a statement to read. It's important to us that you have a platform for your questions and comments during this meeting. Therefore, to ask questions or make a public comment during tonight's virtual meeting, you must have registered and joined the meeting via GoToWebinar. Where you now have the ability to submit your question or comments to the questions option in your control panel. Or you can use the raise your hand option to be allowed to speak. And Carrie, do we have any questions?
There is nobody raising their hand at this time.
At this time, okay. Um, if, um, if anyone's on the phone, uh, for those who are those who have joined the meeting via telephone. Would like to ask a question or make a comment, you're now welcome to unmute your phone. We ask that you only have your phone unmuted while you are asking a question. Please mute when you are no longer live. You can unmute unmute your phone by pushing star six. Please then state your name and address and when acknowledged by the chair person, you can then state your question or comment. When you are done with the comment, please mute your phone mute your phone again by pushing star six. As with any public hearing, we ask you to be respectful of board members and the other residents who are making their comments by patiently and quietly waiting your turn. Thank you. So if anyone wants to make a comment on on the phone, please unmute and, uh. Speak now. All right, hearing none. Carrie, did we get any, um, questions via email?
No.
Okay, thank you. Item number six, call for the 2020 special town meeting scheduled for November 7th, 2020 and open the warrant. Mr. Clerk, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to call the 2020 special town meeting scheduled for November 7th, 2020 and open the warrant with a closed date of October 7th, 2020 at 12 noon.
Is there a second? Okay, the motion and the second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh, Mr. Trowbridge?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan? Mr. Schoenfeld?
Aye.
Mr. Afterwards?
Aye.
I vote yes. Uh, Mr. Ryan?
It shows that he's here and his microphone is on, but.
Yes, okay. Four four to zero. Uh, item seven, uh, discussion and consideration of the select board's intent to take a vote on reducing the quorum needed for special town meeting. And schedule such vote for October 21st, 2020. Do we have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, I'll move to publish the select board's intention to take a vote on reducing the quorum needed at special town meeting. And any other town meeting during the pre-pendant pendency of the governor's state of emergency. And schedule such vote to happen at the select board meeting on October 21st, 2020 at 5:30 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Schoenfeld?
Uh, having gone through the extensive things we're going to be doing, um, over the last three hours, you know. What we're asking for the town to do at the fall time meeting is extensive, is somewhat unprecedented, 14 million here, seven trucks there. Um, a huge FinCom reserve. I don't think we should be allowing less than our standard 200 quorum to be making this choice. If we want to have the hearing, that's fine, but I don't support, um, reducing quorum.
Anyone else? Mr. Trowbridge?
Uh, yeah, I would disagree. I mean, it'd be great if we have if we have a a a large crowd there to make this decision. But unfortunately during the pandemic, we still have to ensure the town's running.
We had 306 people in Xfinity Lot, 95 degree weather.
Anyone, Mr. Ryan? Mr. Afterwards? No? I'll just point out that it's unclear what the public health conditions situation will be on November 7th. Uh, we have to get a budget done by December. You know, we have to get a budget done before we set the tax rate. So this is, uh, uh, you know, we're not asking people not to come unless they choose not to because of conditions at the time. So rather than not have a budget, I I think it's it's, uh, it makes sense to, uh, to devote this in and go from there. Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, I'm back. That's all for now. I was on the phone, but you couldn't hear me, obviously.
Okay, Mr. Donfeld?
We do have a budget. It could be modified. We're not sure what's how it's going to be modified yet, but we do have a budget. So I don't see that as being an issue. But anyway, um, Kevin, if you'd like to elaborate and.
Sure, we do. We do have one issue in particular. So it is fair to say that there was a budget that was approved at June 10th, right? At at our town meeting at Xfinity Center. However, due to the issue that we have with the Parking Enterprise Fund, they may not certify our tax rate. Because we're going to not even receive anywhere near the $627,000 original budget that was established. Our tax rate could get held up, which means there would have to be a third quarter preliminary bill. And the increase would then end up only on the fourth quarter bill. It would impact people's escrow payments and it would be a nightmare for us. So I think that the insurance policy, at least having a discussion about that on the 21st would really be an important thing to do.
Okay, so we had a motion in the second discussion, I mean, further discussion hearing none, Mr. Trowbridge?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Ryan?
I just one quick question. What what's remind me the quorum number that we need at town meeting?
Is it 200 for the special town meeting also?
In the spring, we reduced it to what? Half of that? Is that what we said? I forget what was the, uh, the numbers?
Yes, reduce it to 100.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Trowbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Afterwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenfeld?
No.
And I vote yes. It's four to one. Okay. Item seven, discussion and consideration of the select board's intent to take a vote on we, oh, I'm sorry, we did that. Item eight is discussion of select board meeting schedule and times. Um, I I received a request to reconsider the times for the meetings, um, going forward. Uh, and I had pointed out, I think, uh, that, um, planning board now meets on alternate Wednesdays from when we do. However, it was pointed out to me that in November, uh, one Wednesday is taken up by the, uh. By the day before Thanksgiving and the other is taken up by Veterans Day. So we have a conflict again. So the planning board and the select board would also be meeting, uh, would be meeting on the same dates, uh, which are the. Whatever the particular dates are, the 4th and. Whatever 14 days is after that, the 18th.
18th.
Yeah, so, um. You know, so we have the opportunity in the planning board meeting later, we have the opportunity to meet at 5, which is not, you know, an improvement from meeting over 5:30. Uh, there are also, uh, we also have Monday dates available in November if people are open to that. But. Just on the general question of of, um, changing the times of the meetings, which which are currently, which have been held for a while. Uh, on 5:30, I'd like to hear some discussion on that with what the sense of the board is. Mr. Schoenfeld?
Um, if we're moving to in-person meetings, as I think we are starting next week, um, I can't make 5:30. I ask that we go back to our 6:30 schedule, especially if we're going to have in-person meetings.
Anyone else?
Is there a permanent change or just for these November meetings?
Well, actually, I I confused the issue by bringing those on on board, but I wanted to make it clear that we have a 5 o'clock meeting requirement on those November dates. It doesn't improve things. Um. Mr. Afterwards?
Wasn't the gist of the 6:30 start, um, primarily due to folks commuting from Boston on the train? You know, driving and all like that. I mean, um, most people's day work ends at 5:00. I mean, you know, the late nights kind of, maybe because I'm getting old. I'd like to go as early as, you know, as early as we can, but try, you know, trying to keep, you know. You know, make it good for everybody. But on the other hand, it's like, like tonight, I mean, we've been three hours already. We're still not done, you know? If this started at 7 o'clock, we'd be it'd be 10 o'clock.
Well, we we do always have the opportunity of scheduling more meetings. I would mention that. Mr. Trowbridge?
Uh, I mean, the 5:30, even if we're going live, we're still going to have to be airing that through, um, to go to webinar. But one, I mean, you know, once we get through that, we go to live, live meetings where people can attend, then go back to the 6:30.
I'm of a similar, uh, feeling. I think that, you know, once people start going back to Boston or Providence, uh, to work or heading back to offices. That is good. The the late later time makes sense. Currently, uh, most people are home at 5:30. Um, takes any of us approximately seven minutes to get to town hall. That's that's my thought on the matter.
It it doesn't matter. The select board has traditionally met at 6:30, 7 o'clock on Wednesday nights. The residents are expecting us. It even still says on the website that we meet at 6:30. Um, on Wednesday nights, we usually make changes with respect to summer flexibility because it's often there. You know, my workload hasn't changed because of COVID. I'm still working, you know, usual type of hours, um, including the lack of a commute. Which is the case for for most, um, most individuals. We're still working those commute hours. It's not like life has stopped, um, with respect to work life. But the other aspect is, is, you know, if we want to have resident interaction, dinnertime is not the time to have a meeting. Especially if we start our meetings with resident questions and comments, um, we get none. Tonight, we talked about $14 million expense and not a single resident watched, at least as far as we know on on the, um. The website, they may have watched on TV, but I think we need to get back to some normalcy. I like the idea of getting back into the into the town meeting or into town hall for our meetings and that means 6:30. I've loved the convenience of the last last few months. Don't get me wrong. I like this. But it's too demanding and to be honest, I'll pick family dinner over you guys any day. And I'm sure you guys will all respect that as well. I mean, many of you have told me family first and I really, really agreed when I first started, whether it was FinCom or whether it was the select board, family first. I believe that as well. So, um, for that reason, I would ask. Ask for that consideration.
We we all have families and, um, I recall, uh, having much younger children and and serving in various capacities. And, um, having to make arrangements to go to meetings, uh, we meet twice a month, maybe three nights a month. So, uh, you know, that gives you another 27 days to have dinner at 5:30. And if you're having, if you can't make it at 6, if you can't make it at 5:30, you have the time to have dinner at 5:30. I I don't, I think any time we choose will 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 limit someone's participation, especially of of the residents. Especially given the current, you know, schedules for everyone. There are a lot of people who actually are working out in the in the field. For whom 5:30 or 7:30 doesn't make a difference. Uh, and and I would not, uh, I would not say that you, you know. That there's a causal relationship between us not getting questions and and the time of our meeting because we didn't get questions. Well, that's all I have to say. This, do we have a motion? Mr. Trowbridge?
I'll I'll make a motion that as long as we are continuing to go through the GoToWebinar, um, 5:30, once we're live back again. Where everybody's coming to the actual town hall, then we go back to the 6:30.
Is there a second? I can buy Mr. Afterwards. Any further discussion?
It's it's flat out offensive. I mean, we need to get back on our normal schedule. So residents, absolutely, absolutely expect a 6:30 on Wednesday meeting. So do what you want. If you don't want me to attend meetings, then fine, stick with 5:30.
Kevin, we have possibility. Mr. Ryan?
Did I misunderstand the the motion? Can you repeat it, Mike? They said 6:30.
That we would be 5:30 as long as we're still having to broadcast through GoToWebinar? Because when we go live, we're still have to be having that that done. Once, once we're back live, where people are coming into the town hall for our meetings, we'll go back to 6:30.
Anybody consider splitting the difference here? I mean, either time works for me, so it doesn't matter to me, but I'm just for the sake of. Everyone's happiness is with 6 help anybody or hurt anybody in particular?
Sure.
And I can live with 6. I can live with any any of the times. So just offering that up.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. I believe if we want a a different motion, we'd have to defeat this one. Mr. Trowbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Afterwards?
Aye.
Ryan?
Uh, since the motion has not changed, I'll say yes.
Mr. Donfeld?
No.
I vote yes. Gentlemen, we do have the issue since we're still on this of, um. The 4th and the 18th dates, um, we can, uh, we can meet, which are regularly scheduled dates in November. We can meet in, um. At 5 o'clock on the 4th and the 18th, or we can go, I believe. To the. Prior Mondays on each of those dates and have a wide open calendar. So that would be. Discussing at the next meeting? Yeah. All right, well, Mr. Afterwards?
Yeah, we could probably look at also maybe throwing in a light, if we go to a Monday, then maybe we can just kill two birds with one stone and have a light department meeting also. On one of those Mondays and we won't have to meet again.
All right, let's gather our thoughts and come up with a date, uh, at our next meeting. Thank you. Review and approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Schoenfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Afterwards?
Yep.
Mr. Trowbridge? Mr. Trowbridge?
Yes.
And I vote yes, uh, 5-4 and none against. Consideration of approval of town payroll warrants. Hit it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve town payroll, town Medicaid payroll, 21012PT, 396094.20.
Second. We have a motion and a second, uh, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Trowbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Aptwitz?
Stain.
Mr. Schoenfeld?
No.
And I vote yes, so that's 3-4-1 against and Mr. Aptwitz abstaining.
3-1-1.
3-1-1.
Okay, I move to approve town deductions, vendor payroll, 21012TV, 123918.92.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Trowbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Aptwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that's 5-4 and none against.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve town payroll, 21013PT, 407443 and 10 cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Aptwitz?
Abstain.
Mr. Schoenfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Trowbridge?
Yes.
Uh, that's four yes and one abstention by Mr. Aptwitz?
Move to approve town vendor payroll, 21013TV, 126918.07.
Second.
Is there? We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Trowbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Aptwitz?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that's 5-4 and none against.
Move to approve school payroll, school Medicaid payroll, 21013PS, 1,688,361 and 42 cents.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Schoenfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Aptwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Trowbridge?
Abstain.
And I vote yes, that's 4-4 and none against, one abstention by, uh, Mr. Trowbridge. Is that it, Mr. Clerk?
One, one more. Move to approve school deductions payroll, 21013SV, 529,680 and 89 cents.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Aptwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Trowbridge?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that's, uh, 5-4 and none against. That's it for the, uh, warrants?
That's it, yep.
We have any correspondence?
Yeah, we have something from the ADCC. It's an advisory regarding the extension of allowance of outdoor table service. And basically the gist of it is local licensing authorities may approve requests. For expansion of outdoor table service or extensions of earlier granted approved from November 1st for any period. Up to and until 60 days after the end of the state of emergency. The local licensing authority may issue extensions automatically to all licensees or may do so on request from individual licensees. And that's it.
That's it. All right, select board members, comments and questions, Mr. Schoenfeld?
Not, I'll pass for a minute. Yeah. Give me a second, go ahead with something else.
We'll wait.
No, go with someone else. I gotta find my stuff. Move on to someone else, I can find.
Due to the lateness of the meeting, I'll, I'll pass.
Mr. Aptwitz?
Due to the timing also, I will forego any questions. Uh, given the, given the late hour, I've got several things I want to discuss, but no, I'm good.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the only thing I have is, um. Got a lot of questions on Halloween and I thank Kevin for making that clear that the town's not canceling Halloween. But give very good recommendations and, um, I'll ask some other time, but just want to put that out there. Uh, we have some funds for Plymouth Street Playground. Sometime in the future, we can talk about whether those will actually be spent. Otherwise, that's it. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Given this, given the lateness of the hour and the fact that I'm hungry, I have no comments. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second? Mr. Trowbridge?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Aptwitz?
Yes.
Yeoman's work, gentlemen, thank you very much. I vote yes and good night.